Go ahead.
Okay, hello, everybody.
Mike.
Yeah, I'm good. So we will call to order the special meeting of the Marin Municipal Water District Board of Directors on this day, May 2, 2023. If I could have a roll call, please, Terry.
Sure. Director Larry Russell.
Here.
Thank you. Director Matt Sampson.
Here.
Director Jed Smith.
Here.
Vice President Ranji Kush.
Here.
And President Monte Schmidt.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, then, the next item is our agenda. So if I could have a motion to adopt our agenda.
So moved. The second.
Thank you. A vote, please, Terry.
Director Russell.
Hi.
Director Sampson.
Hi.
Director Smith.
Hi.
Vice President Kush.
Hi.
And President Schmidt.
Hi.
Thank you.
Next item are any public comments on the closed session items only.
There are none.
With that, I believe we can convene to our closed session.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We are reconvening the special board meeting of May 2, 2023. We just concluded our closed session and there were no actionable items to report.
You have to say what time, Ranji.
We convened the closed session at 6:15. Adjourned, sorry, adjourned at 6:15 with no actionable items to report. So I believe the next item would be public comment on items that are not on our agenda.
That is correct, and we have a few speakers. The first one is Mr. George Topper, then Ed Jamison and Clayton Smith. So Mr. Topper, if you can please come to the podium or to the lectern.
Good evening. My name is George Topper. I'm a customer. I have, that's my status. I realize a lot of the board members are new, and then since I'm retired, I had some time. I took a trip down memory lane. And I started in 1983, which was the last time the water district added any capacity to its system. Nothing since then. Okay, the population of the county has grown by close to 50,000 people since that time, and again, no additional capacity. There was also about 14 or 15 years when the district decided they didn't need to raise the rates, which left about $60 million that went down the drain that they could have used, or maybe they thought they'd never need it kind of thing. I was look, four years ago, we got a pretty brochure with a rate increase that bumped the average bill up by about a third, which is $180 a year. Now we have another pretty brochure, which wants to take the average users' bill from $550 to 1,024, which to my calculations is about an 86% increase. If the surcharges which are being, if being proposed, which are close to 100%, that bill would go up to almost $1,500 or a 270% increase. Other surcharges, other water districts have put surcharges in place in the range from 5 to 15%, okay? North Marin Water District is proposing a 10% rate increase. The town of Cordermadera's rate increase under the new proposed rate is 10%, but I will get an 86% rate increase. If I were a larger user, call that 25 CCFs, who's presently paying $860 a year, July of this year, that goes to $1,520, 76%, with the surcharge $2,700 a year potentially. In 2026, that could be as high as $3,600 for someone who is now paying $860. So perhaps, I don't expect anything to change. I'm not protesting the rate increases because I realize, one, this isn't the forum to do it. Two, I also realize that's an absolute waste of time because the deck is stacked where you need 50% plus one bill, people who are billed for the system to write in on pencil and paper kind of thing. So there's no hope for that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Topper. Next, we have Mr. Ed Jamison, please.
Yes, thanks. The last regular board meeting had a slide summarizing the district's various conservation programs, and I'd like to very briefly comment on four of them. Laundromat landscape gray water has been shown by district staff to be excessively costly to the district at $5,000 an acre foot. Rain barrels cost $8,000 an acre foot. Additional costs to the customer drive these costs even higher. And conservation expert Madas consulting confirmed that these programs offer trivial potential water savings. Madas concluded the same about pool covers and recommended that all three programs be removed from the district's WCE Water Conservation Element Plan. Also, in a board meeting last August, it was stated that only 10% of customers comply with the district's regulation requiring that new construction and greater than 50% remodeling must include gray water systems, with 90% of customers declaring gray water to be infeasible. It's also practical for several reasons. This gray water regulation pointlessly attempts to impose significant unnecessary costs on customers to little productive result. Its main effect appears to be to torment MMWD's customers. The board needs to rescind the district's gray water requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next, we have Mr. Ed, I'm sorry, Clayton Smith. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I think it's kind of interesting at the last meeting. And I think it happened in a couple of other meetings. There was this assumption and almost a bet that the rain had come to an end for the season. And of course, right afterwards, we find a substantial amount of geoengineering going on in the atmosphere. There was a persistent amount of it aerosoling and cloud creating going on for probably the last a couple of weeks, almost on a daily basis. We started out with a weather channel prediction that we would be having sunny days going forward into the indefinite future. And of course, that has now changed. And I would again argue it's because of the geoengineering that's taking place. We're now having rain again, which confirms all of my suspicions that this project that's going on, it may be an experimental project. We really don't know. But we do know that there is some form of weather modification that's going on purposely above the the Bay Area and it extends from my network of observers which are watching this up and down the coast, that this is going on all the way from up north of Point Reyes, all the way down to Santa Cruz. And so I think it's something that we need to pay attention to. I would like to know if you're picking up any traces of barium and silver oxide and aluminum oxide and some of the other suspected elements that are being sprayed in the air in the water supply. If you're doing sampling here, it would be interesting information. And also, it would be informative to those of us who might be concerned that this could be deleterious to our health. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no more speakers, sir.
Okay, the next item on our agenda are directors and general manager announcements. I suggest we start with directors, beginning with the two that are remote. Monte, do you want to, anything to?
I don't have anything to add this evening.
Thanks, Monte. Larry?
None for me.
Jed?
Okay, um, I'll start by saying I joined Brett, our head of finance at our Rotary Club forum on the new rates and there's a Rotary Club of Sausalito, and it was an outstanding presentation, well, well received audience. I'd say there were about 40 or 50 people engaged, you know, at least 30, 40 minutes of questions. And Brett, you did an outstanding job. So thank you. I also joined the spring membership meeting at the West Point Inn. Having abstained from that conversation and negotiation in the lease, they were super thrilled to announce the the positive resolution of a long term lease with Marin Water. And so it was a celebration. So they're very appreciative. No one to pass that along. And that had about 100 people there. So that was a good event. On Monday, May 1, Paul Selya and I went to the WAC meeting in Santa Rosa. And it was a robust meeting, deep talking about different levels of usage going up or down over the last few years, all down from all of their, all of the contractors with Marin Waters use down 23% year to date. And over 30% below the 2013 baseline that they look at. I thought it was particularly interesting that there was a hazard mitigation plan that they went into detail around tier one and tier two hazards that Sonoma Water ranks in terms of using a methodology of looking at the highest qualitative benefit to cost ratio of the potential hazards from a seismic perspective or single points of failure that we've talked about here before. And I think, Paul, you said we have done some sort of review like that internally. I'd love to maybe bring that back up so that we could look at it or have it forwarded, whatever we've done in the past. And then they prioritized which, which actions that they would want to take to mitigate some of those risks in the tier one, which would be the most feasible and cost effective. And then looking at tier two desirable actions, once the tier one objectives were achieved. And those include anything from seismic retrofitting, emergency operations, flood mitigation, liquefication, landslides, coordinating with PG&E for potential fire risk mitigation, et cetera. And then lastly, they did have a report out from a new forum that's being formed called the Russian River Users Forum. And that will be a multi-county group of water interested folks, including tribes and including state representatives and federal representatives. And on the planning organization, Tony from North Marin will be the lead and our Paul Selyer will be the the alternate, thank you. And then they have also, I believe, welcomed any of the contractors to have an elected official that would be on the leadership council. And so that might be something that we would consider once we look into that as who and whether we'd want to participate in that level and who would do that. The WAC chair and vice chair were, were appointed and approved to that leadership council from, from, from the Sonoma WAC. And Petaluma and Valley of the Moon were also appointed to that leadership council. So that's, that's that part of the report. My last call out would be to, a shout out to a longtime volunteer, Sean, you probably know her and others here in the organization. Annie Lizier, who was a, was a volunteer for hundreds of hours for this organization on all levels, including citizens committees and and other work who's come under some ill health and possibly moving out of the county. And I just wanted to recognize her tremendous work as well as others who have volunteered for Marin Water to do their best to look out for the watershed in our community. And this is one superstar and just want to wish her the best.
Great. Thanks, Jed. Matt?
Thanks, Ranji. Just a few things. On the 20th of April, I intended for the first meeting the Tamalas Bay Technical Advisory Committee, and it was good to meet that group out there and see the work they're doing, not only on their their lands surrounding Tamalas Bay, but also the monitoring they're doing of the, of the water quality coming out of Walker Creek and all the way down into Tamalas Bay, also through Lagunitas Creek. So interesting group. I look forward to continuing engagement with them. The week before, I was able to attend the Recreation Management Plan Community Workshop and want to acknowledge our watershed manager, Sean, for his continued navigation of this very challenging process. But the meeting went very well, and I'm looking forward to how that plan is going to be integrating with our other plans moving forward as we work through the summertime on that. So thank you for the work. And then this last week, I was able to spend some time again on the watershed. It's becoming a little bit of a pattern, but both with Sean and with Carl and catching up on a lot of things related to what they're doing out there. And I look forward to some, some good ideas being brought to the watershed meeting in June, so we can start kicking around some ideas to, to make a few improvements out there. And that was it. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Matt. I just, I want to quickly note that last week, our Department of Water Resources here in California announced a number of very interesting innovative research collaborations with the National Alliance for Water Innovation, or NOWE, which is based at the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory, just across the bay. There are six different projects that are going to be piloting breakthrough technologies for both desalinization and reuse. They include wave powered DSal that is entirely carbon free, doesn't require any grid electricity, the use of plants for removing brine, salt from brine, and the list goes on. You know, it's always remarkable that we probably sit in the most concentrated area with respect to research on water resources and technical innovation. I hope there's an opportunity maybe at some point to get somebody, say, from NOWE to come over and, and speak with us, possibly at a board retreat and, and give us an update on what we might be seeing in the future with respect to innovation. But with that, Ben, I'll pass it to you.
Thank you. I do have a brief item, some good news. We've been awarded a grant of $723,000 from the Bureau of Reclamation for three years of implementation of water efficiency programs as part of a Sonoma Marin Saving Water Partnership Grant application that Sonoma Water submitted to be used for rebates for turf conversion, clothes washers, efficiency toilets, smart irrigation controllers, and we would have a similar match over the three year period. There's still details to be developed and at some point, probably somewhat soon, the funding agreement would come back to the board for consideration for approval. That's all I had.
That's encouraging. Thank you. I believe the next item on our agenda is the approval or our consent calendar. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Terry, if we could have a vote, please.
Director Russell.
Hi.
Director Sampson.
Hi.
Director Smith.
Hi.
President Schmidt.
Hi.
And Vice President Kush.
Hi.
And there are no comments on that either.
Thanks, Terry. And I think now we're, we will discuss our calendar going forward.
The, yes, the regular calendar, which is the future meeting schedule. And I would just like to inform the board, based on the staff report that was sent out in the packet, that tomorrow is a special meeting of the Board of Directors. It's a closed session conference with labor negotiators at 4:00 PM. Then Tuesday, May 16, we'll have our regular bimonthly meeting, but this will include our public hearing on the proposed rate increases. That's at 6:30 PM. On Wednesday, May 17, it's tentative, the Communications and Water Efficiency Committee. I'm still waiting on one director before I can get a set date for when that committee meeting will be moved. Friday, May 19, is the Operations Committee meeting at 9:30 AM. In terms of external meetings, the North Bay Watershed Association will have a meeting at the City of Petaluma Ellis Creek Treatment Plant on Friday, May 5 at 9:30 AM. And that's all I have to report.
Thanks, Terry.
And there are no comments on that either.
Great. So I think we then are ready for the tour de force that I think you've prepared for us today, Brett. I, I don't know that I've ever seen such a comprehensive presentation, but it's also quite long. So forward to getting started.
Thank you. Yeah. And I can't take all the credit for it. We've been working behind the scenes with each division to try to present the board with a a good view of our operating budget, our baseline budget, as well as our capital budget and the enhancements that are included in this, in this year's proposed budget. So before we could go, and I did want to thank all the division directors for all their efforts towards getting this together. It is a long slide deck, so it won't take a lot of time in the preamble. I'll go ahead and start sharing my screen here to get us going for today. Hopefully, everybody can see that now. Okay, so today's agenda is shown here. I'll be providing a high level look at some of the bigger numbers and some of the ways in which our budget's changing. We'll talk a little bit about our budget process. And then some of the cost drivers that we're seeing in terms of our operating budget primarily. We'll talk about budget enhancements, and those should not be anything new to the board or to the public who's been watching the budget enhancements. We'll cover all of the topics we discussed as part of the rate setting process. Then I'll turn it over to the division directors, and each of them will come and give a couple of slides on their respective budgets. And then at the end, we'll have the Capital Improvement Program Team, Crystal and Alicia, provide an overview of what's going into the CIP. And then we'll talk about next steps. And I did want to just mention that today's item is informational in nature, so we're not asking for any actions by the board. It is intended, as the title is, a budget study session. So we're here to provide information, answer questions as needed. See if I can click through here. There we go. Okay, so this, this slide here is for context, and it really just captures kind of the big moving pieces. I'll obviously go through the details here over the next few minutes. But our total district budget in terms of all funds, capital and operating is $135 million for fiscal year 2324. But that does represent a 22% increase compared to the, the current year budget fiscal 2223. When we break that down between operating and capital, the majority of our funds are in the operating fund. That's 104.8 million dollars. We're seeing a 13% increase, and I'll talk about what's driving the budget there. It's largely inflationary measures as we've been discussing the last few months. But the operating fund, just for background, does contain the revenues and the expenses associated with our day to day operations and maintenance. It does also contain our debt service that helps fund our capital program. In our capital fund, we're seeing a budget of 25.6 million, and that's a 40% increase, so a much larger relative increase there. That includes both our baseline capital improvement projects, as well as the water supply enhancement projects we've been talking about. It also includes kind of ongoing and regular vehicle and equipment replacement. As a reminder, we do have a two-year budget process here. The, we're at the beginning of that for 2324, and you'll also see some 2425 numbers in here. And we do come back to the board at a mid-cycle point, which would be next year at this time, to just review and check our inputs and make sure we don't have any major changes to make. So this here kind of shows our annual budget process map. And I think what this says to me is that we're really always kind of working on the budget, right? On one side or the other, it's a constant development process, whether it's internal analysis or coordination or working with the, the board on enhancements and prioritization. But just to walk through this year, beginning in the late summer of each year, it's when we close the books in the prior year and we take the, those accounting numbers and begin our analysis to find out, to update our trend lines, to find out where we're making more money and less money, where we're spending more and less, and start to kind of build the baseline for the next year. That's goes through the fall as it shows there, as we kind of update our baseline budget, incorporating revenue and expense trends. In the winter, we meet with all the divisions to, to learn if there are any other expense drivers within their budgets, any emerging needs. And then we also talk to them about proposed enhancements and how we can make the district function better. We wrap all that up, and we typically bring it here to the board in a couple of different forums in terms of a prioritization process. And then this year, because it coincided with the rate cycle, that also included a cost of service study. So as you'll hear me talk about, the cost of our service is really what we talked about as the revenue requirement. So we've been discussing kind of what goes into that since December and all the way through up until we finalized that cost of service study in preparation for the rate cycle. Now we're here today in early summer budget study session today. We'll have a rate hearing, as Terry mentioned, in a couple of weeks, and then we'll come back to the board to finish off our budget adoption. I would also mention there, we'll have a finance committee meeting, where we'll be able to provide more detail and follow up on any questions from today. And then we'll come back in June for the formal budget adoption. So it'll be two or three more times your board will hear budget details and have a chance to ask questions if needed. Our district-wide budget goals are shown here. I think we've all been talking about these again in terms of the rate setting process, but they parallel themselves into the budget process. So number one, to strengthen our water supply reliability. Two, to build upon our wildfire resiliency efforts. Three, to keep pace with inflation and invest in our aging infrastructure. And four, to replenish our reserves and prepare for future uncertainties. So again, those are common themes we've had over the last couple of weeks, but they do drive the budget process as they do the rates as well. So when you wrap all that up, and I know I'm skipped quite a few steps here, and we'll certainly back this up a little bit, but wanted to kind of skip to kind of the punchline here, which is how our budget looks from a couple of different views. Here, we're looking at the expense budget by fund, and so we're showing fiscal 22 and 23, the last two years budget cycle here, and the left columns are fiscal 24 budget that we're still finalizing. The percent change is shown in the 25 budget. So as you can see within our operating budget, it's a 13% increase, increase, which is largely driven by inflation. And again, I'll outline those factors going forward, but that's much more in line with kind of standard inflation for the district. Catching up after two years as well. I think that's something to remember is that we're comparing 24 here to the numbers we thought were good back in 22. Because it's a two-year budget process. So in many cases, we've been seeing inflation along the way, but haven't inked it yet in terms of the final budget. So this will incorporate two years of catch-up as well as our current inflationary assumptions. On the capital fund, we're seeing a bigger increase of 40%. And that really reflects our increased investment in deferred maintenance, as well as our water supply projects. And we'll talk more about that in the CIP budget. And you'll see a line down here, contribution to reserves. This was, this is a combination of two elements. It's $2.5 million for water supply, future water supply projects, and $2.5 million to begin rebuilding our unrestricted reserve balance. So combine those together, they'll both go into the reserve category for a total of $5 million this year and next year. You'll see that in year two over here in fiscal 25, the operating budget comes much more in line with just expected inflation at 5% as we've kind of done our catch-up process there. But capital continues to increase, and that reflects our kind of stepped up or phased investments as we have it into our deferred maintenance. And we also have a higher investment in the second year in water supply projects in the roadmap. The next look down here on the second kind of frame on the screen is the same numbers in the bottom line, you'll notice, but it's instead of divided by the two funds and the reserves, it's divided by the five or six main expenditure areas. So personnel, again, a modest increase, 2% compared to the prior year, and we're expecting a 4% next year. I would just briefly say that that 4% next year reflects, I think, what we're expecting in some of the pension costs that we'll have facing the fiscal year 22 investment returns. Those typically lag by a year or two. So we're doing a little bit of a guessing game there, but we'll get more information over the summer from Calpers. But we do have a placeholder in there for what is expected to be a little bit of an increase in that second year. Service and supplies really captures all kind of the day-to-day expenditures that we have. They're not personnel related, and that really is the driver of the operating budget this year in terms of a 42% increase. I'll detail again what goes into that. It really is four or five large items that we've been discussing as part of the rate process. And again, that moderates in the second year. Debt service is going down slightly, and that's kind of this continued effect of refinancing that we did two, three years ago now to take advantage of better rates in terms of the overall bond market. So they're just, just making their way through our debt service schedules over the next year. We have a slight decrease in year two there fiscal year 25, as we retire one of our smaller outstanding debts. Capital projects, again, the baseline, as I put here in the first line, is increasing just slightly, 3% and 8%. It's the enhancements that you see below, the 4 million and then 10 million. That's our capital backlog, our deferred maintenance, because we're phasing into that. Water supply projects going from 2.7 to 9.2 over the next two years, and then reserves staying at 5 million per year. So those are kind of the top, you know, high-end numbers. And again, we'll break those down over the next few slides and within each division. Just a quick question, Brett. Do you, do you expect to use debt for any of those capital projects that you have listed there, and therefore the debt service go up and it's just not reflected? So primarily for debt, we're expecting in fiscal '26 to go out for debt. We're expecting in fiscal twenty six to go out for debt. That would be for those large projects we discussed. Um, I think we still have not finished prioritizing which two of those we're likely to go for. So I don't have a program in this particular budget here. We did talk about potentially going out for uh the Wi-Fi alone, uh right, and for the for the one specific project. Um, that is not programmed in here yet. Uh, if it does, we'll kind of swap it out with capitals. We have that currently cash funded on the capital side. So we would just swap out the funds from cash fund to capital over to debt service. So it'll essentially be a net zero change if we do the Wi-Fi alone. Thank you. Okay, when we break it down by category, um this is the exact, actually exactly what was in the slide before, but sometimes easier to see uh in a pie chart. So you see that the the majority of our costs are personnel costs. We are a service organization. Um, the largest, you know, overall uh group of our expenses is in the personnel category. Uh, another twenty eight percent or nearly thirty percent comes from our day-to-day operations and service and supplies. Uh, debt service, seven percent. Um, capital projects, fourteen, and once we add the enhancements there, it'll be seventeen, and next year it'll be closer to twenty as we step into that. So capital will be uh closer to twenty percent of our budget um on an ongoing basis. And then you can see the water supply resiliency projects there. Um, those are new to the district, two percent uh for now. And then contribution to reserves ends up being four percent. So I'm certainly rounding out the mix there with with the additional capital and water supply projects identified in the rate process this year. When we look at it by revenue, and I'll have a slide on the detail on revenue, but this is how we fund all the activities here in the district. Again, uh, we are primarily, if not nearly a hundred percent funded by uh customer rates. I think it's ninety five percent because funded by rates, no taxes. And so all the rates go in one sense or another here to this pie chart. Um, water sales being the biggest um piece of that, and those are volumetric. Um, again, so sixty two percent of our of our revenues come in through volumetric or variable water rates. Four percent will be watershed management fee. And again, that will be changing to volumetric under the current proposal. So we'll have um nearly seventy percent of our of our revenue coming in from the volumetric side of the house or variable side. Service charge is fixed. That's up here eighteen percent, and capital maintenance fee are fixed. Those are both holding pretty flat, as we'll see in the next couple of slides. And then other revenue I'll talk about later. Uh, it's a small portion of our budget, but it does fund some very good programs that we have here at the district. Those are primarily um rents that we get from district properties. I'll talk about those a little later. Right. So this is really the 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 key slide for me in terms of what's driving uh the cost increase. Um, and I tried to put them here into some pretty you know, large buckets, and they are pretty large numbers on their own. But um number one up there at the top is our water supply resiliency efforts. Um, that, I mean, these cover both operating and capital funds. So try to combine them into kind of logical categories, but short-term projects, um we'll talk about, Paul will talk about that a little bit later in terms of the roadmap, and those no-regret projects that we do have. Uh, it also includes our our reserve there, as well as additional um imported water from Sonoma. Uh, the second line there, capital projects and which covers our deferred maintenance and our critical systems. So that's the enhancements that we're talking about for capital projects. Um, that will phase in more over the four years, but in year one, it accounts for a three point six million dollar increase. Uh, other service enhancements primarily on the watershed there with the Biffitt funding of five hundred thousand and a ranger trainee. Um, those are the bulk of that eight hundred and ten thousand. We also have a district-wide training position um embedded in that service enhancement line. Um, purchased water. So we're seeing a couple of different uh cost drivers there. Number one, we're expecting to import more water as part of our our longer-term um baseline. Secondly, we're seeing a double-digit increase coming from Sonoma for this, the each unit of water we get. So two cost drivers there bringing our budget up um by about two million dollars. And then water treatment, in in particular here, we're talking about water treatment chemicals. Um, and Darren will talk about that a little bit in his presentation, but that's adding another five hundred thousand or so um to the overall operating budget. We talked about reserve replenishment. In this case, I've shown just the unrestricted amount, and I've put the other two and a half million dollars for the water supply on the top line there. Paving contracts, again, we've talked about that quite a bit in the last month or two. Um, but those are a- at this point beyond our control, and we are working on cost containment strategies there, but to account for the costs over the next year or two, uh, we're seeing about a two million dollar increase compared to what was in the prior budget. Um, insurance, we had a presentation at the last finance committee um in terms of the cost drivers on the insurance side. And this is essentially a three-year catch-up from where we were back in two thousand twenty one to the tune of eight hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. And then personnel costs, I mentioned, those are the largest, you know, portion of our budget, so over forty five percent of our budget in total. And as we, you know, apply an expected increase, whether it's to healthcare costs, um salary inflation or other factors, it amounts to eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So add all that up, and that's about nineteen point nine million dollars, nearly twenty million dollars. That accounts for the bulk of what we're seeing in terms of cost pressures or cost um drivers um for the operating capital budget. When we look back over time, um this is just the operating budget itself. Um, you can see that, you know, we've between two thousand thirteen and twenty three, we had a very flat um budget that increased about four percent, and we talked about this, the rate process that that was probably not keeping pace with inflation as most other um uh water agencies were seeing something near twice inflation in terms of operating costs, because again, we've talked about how the agency does not see the same general inflation um pressures that that we do in the broader market. So the key inputs that we have are really driving our costs higher and higher each year. In this case, we um kept it to about four percent per year um for the last ten years. And you can see how we're starting to uh bend that trend line here in the last two. So if you plot fiscal twenty four and twenty five on this uh chart as well, those would be in excess of kind of the longer-term trend of four percent. And you can see on the bottom are are thirteen percent increase in twenty four, and then back down to a more normal five percent in twenty five. That does incorporate all the factors in the prior slide and does how account for kind of a two-year catch-up in in some of those cost areas, the 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 cost-driving areas. Staffing, as I mentioned, is a big part of our budget, and so we always take a look at, you know, staffing levels and and making sure we're not letting that, you know, uh drive the budget where we don't need it to. And we want to make sure our investments are are targeted there, and we're you know, only adding positions where we're absolutely necessary and where they they serve the district well. So you can see we're still well below the staffing levels of twenty um twelve and thirteen. About, you know, twenty five positions or so at the at the current moment below those. We are planning to add two staff in twenty four, and as it's outlined there in the bottom, which would be a ranger trainee at the watershed in an organization organizational training um specialist in the HR department. And then in the second year of the two-year budget, we're proposing to add two additional FTE, and that would be the valve exercising crew. And Darren will talk about those in his presentation and and why they're critical to the ongoing operations of the district.
Excuse me, Brett. Yeah. I I can't remember if we've discussed this in the past. I'll ask any, I'll ask, uh, do we know what happened between twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen with respect to staffing?
Well, um, I I wasn't here at the district at the time, but in, you know, in the general industry, that was, you know, following two or three years of terrible investment markets, which really drove personnel costs, frankly, pension costs. So I was at the city of Sunnyvale at the time, and just beginning with the with the city with the county of Marin. And everyone had to go through some pretty draconian cuts during those days. It was, you know, budgets were getting blown up everywhere because we were seeing ten, twenty, thirty percent increases in our pension costs and forced to account for them and forced to to begin paying Calpers frankly for them. And so uh, there would have been a decision by the board during those times. And again, I wasn't privy to that, but you know, most agencies had similar scale cuts, you know, twenty, you know, ten percent over a couple of years or twenty percent in one year type of a cut. And I think, you know, you'd like to have more time and make those kind of reductions in targeted areas. And so I think, you know, looking back on that, we probably didn't make the cuts in the right place, and we probably have been trying to find the right balance ever since. But you you'd see a similar type of an expense reduction in most publicly funded agencies during that time.
Thank you.
Okay, so rate study, I wanted to kind of pull this back into our rate study, because they all, they do go hand in hand, and we've had some comments throughout of uh, you know, throughout this last process of, you know, when does budgeting start and end, and when is the rate study start and end? And the answer is they're they're both kind of always going at the same time. Um, as part of the rate study, as it says here, we we worked with the independent water rate consultant in in the beginning of two thousand twenty two. One of the first things they do with us, and and as we would have to do in a budget process anyways, look at your financial plan, right? Um, where where are you expecting to spend your money? Um, where um are you expecting to to need to spend more money? And so financial plan is another word in the rate study world for a revenue requirement. How much revenue do you need in order to to accomplish your goals as an organization? For us, we looked at that in two different lenses. Number one, the baseline budget, basically, you know, what do we have now? Um, uh, what is the inflationary cost drivers for a current operation? And what other expenditures do we have that we have no control of? Um, the second piece of that would be, you you know, what type of enhancements would we like to make uh to improve the organization, to take advantage of opportunities and to propel us into, you know, i- into the next uh few years in terms of funding and in terms of uh prior priorities for where we want to um make progress. And so baseline budget plus funding enhancements becomes our financial plan and and sets the revenue requirement. The next phase in that, which we 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 talked about quite a bit, and I won't talk today about it, because we'll talk about it again in two weeks at the rate hearing. But is the rate design, once you've, once we've decided as a district, you know, where our priorities are and what how much revenue is required to fund uh the organization, then it's rate design. And in that case, it's how do you spread the cost proportionally? Um, and what's the the best balance? Because it's never perfect. What's the best balance of of fixed fees and variable charges? Um, and so as it's shown on here, you know, the district chose to reduce our overall fixed fees uh in terms of, you know, uh percentage of customers' bills and in terms of our overall balance sheet. Uh, by definition, we used volumetric and variable rates and for the increases, and we'll show that in the next slide uh to fund um operations and enhancements. Uh, we lowered residential tier breaks in the in the in the uh proposal. And that was really to kind of match the demand levels and and really try to try to even out, you know, and be a little bit more in line with with other agencies for where we have our tier breaks. Uh, and to reflect the cost of service and, you know, how we're actually producing our water. And then finally, we are proposing to add drought rates, which uh are also referred to as surcharges, and those would be used um if and when uh the district determines that we're are facing a water supply shortage in terms of our reservoir levels. And so those are there in the Prop two eighteen notice, but I would want to clarify at this point that those would be brought back to the board, and we would would have a decision at the time in terms of what the actual percentage would be. So in the Prop two eighteen notice, we noticed the highest possible surcharge that would be there. But the board will have a decision from zero up to that point, you know, what we will actually need um based on actual consumption levels and demand levels and our water supply levels in the reservoir. So drought rates are there, but they are not enacted until another action is taken by the board. So as part of the cost of service analysis, and we've seen this slide a few times, um uh but the the key thing here is the the as we went through the rate study, we first looked at our policies and our on our current rate structure, looked at our demand revenue requirement, and just talked about quite a bit. Um, that really sets the kind of the base, the the level of funding required to pull in to uh fund the organization. And then rate design is what I just talked about. How do you spread those costs proportionally throughout the the customer base? So that was our approach for cost of service analysis. Uh, when we looked at our revenue requirement, um, these are the the key factors. We had a reduced demand in terms of less overall units being consumed um by the by our customers. We talked about inflationary cost drivers. Uh, I think we've known about deferred maintenance for years here in the district. Um, I think those just became more expensive, and I think we did. We decided that we need to, you know. Let me take that back a little bit. With our aging system, we we studied it and looked and saw that it would need about double our current capital budget to main, just to maintain pace with our current replacement improvement needs. So as as um Crystal and Alicia will talk about, rather than jumping right into that, I think we decided to phase into that over the next four years, and and I think we'll still find that we're not fully at the uh the the full uh baseline uh deferred maintenance level, even after after our fourth year. But we'll we'll will have made some significant progress um towards that effect. And so a significant, you know, changes there. Uh, water supply roadmap is also part of the revenue requirement. Um, again, Paul will talk about this, but um short-term no regrets projects. Uh, we'll have longer-term projects that will require additional studies, and we'll also set up the water supply project reserve. Service enhancements, um again, I've mentioned this a few times, so watershed um funding through the Biffitt um ranger trainee program. Uh, the HR training program position and the valve exercising crew, and then a reserve replenishments and in technology investments. So um so those make up the revenue requirement. Um, and then this is a summary of how uh the revenues will um likely come to the district under the proposed rate structure. And so you can see there the things I've mentioned so far in the sense that water sales uh have the bulk of the increase, right? So that is our variable and volumetric um uh rate-based um revenue. Uh, that increase is substantial, thirty nine percent. Um, but that's offset by essentially flat fees and service charges and capital maintenance fees. If you take those two together, a slight increase in service charge, a slight decrease in the capital maintenance fee, so fixed fees overall remain flat. And then the watershed management fee there in the middle, um that one is proposed to be converted to a a variable or volumetric fee, so that will no longer be a fixed fee. And so you see, taken all together, it's the same increase of the bottom line of twenty two percent as the budget has to be balanced. Um, but as I've shown here, kind of on the in the italics in the bottom, you know, to the district, fixed fees as a percent of our overall rate revenue goes from forty three percent currently down to thirty two percent next year, and then under thirty percent for fiscal twenty five. So it's in line with kind of the goals of our of our revenue requirement and cost of service study. And yeah, I'm just looking at the bullet points in the bottom there, but I think it covered those uh larger increase in the first year, fixed fees are declining. Um, and the majority of the increases on our volumetric side. Okay, so I'm going to back slow down a little bit here as we transition into the division presentations. Uh, the org chart here is just to orient you to the divisions coming um in terms of the the uh the next couple of presentations. Obviously, we all report to the board, uh, general counsel and general manager there in the middle. And the five primary operating divisions, administration, engineering, operations, watershed, and water resources. So those will be the five um presentations here tonight, in addition to capital um at the end of that.
I think the G C also reports to the G M also, right? Not solely to the board? I know it's it's not dotted line or only.
Yeah, the general counsel. The the line that represents.
Collaboration in the day-to-day that goes on, not really a reporting.
So again, for context here, as we divide out the divisions, this is our, again, our our operating budget um with different um carve-outs for the different uh divisions I just showed in the there below. And what stands out here, I think, is operations in the bottom left is by far, by far our biggest department um or division, I should say. Over thirty percent of the budget, over thirty million dollars. Um, interdepartmental at the top left, there is also a large function, and we don't talk about that as much, but it really just is kind of a holding place for large expenses that don't belong in any particular budget. And so I'm talking about debt service, water purchases, uh electricity. Um, some of our retiree health costs that don't necessarily apply to our current employees. Um, things like that, there are large ticket items that just don't belong in in any particular department's budget. Um, and then you see on the right-hand side there, um G M board and legal, uh, less than five percent of the overall budget. Administration, um about ten percent, watershed, seven percent, water resources, very similar, seven percent. Uh, and then engineering there at the bottom at thirteen percent. So these again are the divisions that are going to be coming um in terms of uh presentations. I'll have the first one here for administrative support functions. Um, within the administrative support functions, uh, we we were talking about a total of fifty one F T E, and I should I should have had this earlier. I think I did an earlier slide. We have two hundred and forty F T E budgeted now, two forty three. So um administrative support functions cover about fifty F T E there, thirteen million. Primary areas are board, G M, and legal, uh, human resources, communications, finance, and then customer service and meter operations. And and this will be a similar slide that you'll see in all the presentations coming your way. Uh, just to give you a sense of kind of where where the different uh the size of the different or um departments and operating programs are. In this case, um, customer service and meter operations are the largest um chunk of the this kind of administrative support functions. Um, and I would say that's pretty much evenly split between customer service and meter operations, about eleven F T E in each. And when we look at it this way, kind of rolled up as a group, um expenses aren't changing much. If you look at the bottom line there, four percent increase overall. You know, the I think, you know, in general, these are behind-the-scenes departments, and there's not a lot of, you know, kind of forward-facing uh cost drivers that that we see here. And so um again, the small increases in five and six percent on general admin and materials and supplies are largely for um software um support contracts that happen on the next slide here. Um, as we and and some communications-related work um related to the water conservation element. And we also did have a couple uh shifts between categories. We've tried to clean up the budget a little bit here. So again, bottom line, four percent. And when you break it down, it's largely a personnel services uh function there at the bottom. Uh, you know, most of the costs we have are staff here over eighty percent. And then the 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 non-personal costs that we do have in this in this grouping, um relatively minor with general and admin being the largest at twelve percent there. Baseline cost drivers, as I was starting to get into, um, we do have some funds in here for outreach and marketing. Uh, they're related to water efficiency programs, and um Adrian's can definitely fill in more here, but no, Adrian and the water efficiency group were were closely on their efforts there. I think it's a can't really have water efficiency if you don't have good outreach and and marketing and vice versa. So uh, they they link hand in hand, and for this budget, we're putting, you know, the the ones most closely related to Adrian's uh program here um in the communication side, because it ends up getting transferred there and spent there anyway in terms of when we do our final uh mailers and and online and digital outreach programs. Uh, we also have some additional funding in the H R budget for um employee engagement and development. Um, and then, as I mentioned, software support, um was particularly on the customer service side uh in the billing software that we do have um specific support um for SAP program. Uh, the only proposed change in this program in in this uh service area right now is for organizational development and training position. That's within H R. And that's just to make sure we have one dedicated specialist to to ensure that all of our employees in all of our areas are getting the proper training and and long-term development uh to make them uh efficient and effective and and happy employees. And our work plan and priorities, we've brought a couple of these to the F A C recently, and as well as the uh border treat, but just And our work plan and priorities, we've brought a couple of these to the F A C recently and as well as the Board of Treat, but just to summarize them for the board here. Our top five priorities within this area are district wide training program, a transition to our new recruitment platform, Neo Gov. An agenda management system, and we'll be doing a connection fee study next year and as well as financial policy updates. So that that's the conclusion of the administrative services side of the house as well as the overview. I'm happy to take any questions now if you want me to in the middle. Otherwise, we would transition into the operations budget.
Just just one quick one, Brett, and I I always get stuck when we're looking at our revenues. On our on our demand estimates, I know you've been very careful with demand estimates. Meaning that you're not anticipating a rebound back up to pre twenty one levels and you factored that in. But if 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 demand continues to go down, you know, that obviously will have a big impact on our largest source of revenues. Have you done any analysis to determine that, you know, by what, how much? You know, like how much certain, you know, smaller or drops in demand would affect our overall revenues such that at what point, you know, we're starting to be constrained in our ability. To address some of, you know, some of our goals.
That's a good question and and it's something that we spend a lot of time thinking about and there really is no perfect answer to this. And so I think the idea is if you look back over history, you know, the history that we have data wise, whenever we've seen this, this really constrained consumption period where you go down, you know, and we're at a historical point now. In terms of, you know, twenty two percent or below, you know, where we were at the at the top end in two thousand twenty one. So we're we're currently in a twenty two percent below our high. We're about thirteen or fourteen percent below our longer term trends. And so, you know, just looking at it objectively from from a from a, you know, the data input perspective, you'd expect a rebound to come back. You'd expect a return to the norm or aggression to the mean. And we've looked back and we saw, you know, here at Marin, when we when we do go through those periods, there is some return to the mean, but it does not get back to the peak points. And so I think that was a big discussion we had with the consultants, the the rate advisors is, you know, we can't assume it's just going to come back and, you know, the demand, you know, solves all the issues. And so we we really looked at the longer term trends there and, you know, what happens, you know. Over the next three or four years, and I think we decided to meet somewhere in the middle. So we're expecting to have a, you know, a two percent or so rebound starting next year, you know, and each year thereafter. So essentially eight percent over four years, which would be about half, you know, of where where we find ourselves now. The question you're getting is the other side of that, right? Is the what if it doesn't come back? And so the transition to variable rates, you know, does increase that risk. However, you know, I just, I feel like, you know, in in working with our rate advisor, I feel like we're, it would be hard to get much lower quickly without some sort of an external shock, right? And so I think providing the fact that we have drought rates there, so if we have to, if we have to go back to ultra conservation, you know. Efforts again, I think we would be able to use drought rates. That really helps, you know, having the drought rates there if it's a weather or climate related drop in demand. And other than that, I think we, you know, it's just using our, you know, using our advisors that we have and using the data we do have to know that we're probably at about the lowest you can get to, you know, without some sort of an external shock. And so I don't have a better answer for you other than the rate structure that we have being variable and about eighty five million dollars a year. If we're off by a percent or two, you know, we think we're talking about, you know, eight hundred and fifty thousand, you know, maybe a million and a half in any given year. They can be off in like the two percent range and we do have reserves now, you know, in excess of twenty million dollars. And so it's not like we would run out of money immediately, right? We're not going to see another twenty percent, you know, shock. And so I think, you know, we are taking on some risk to the downside. And I think we tried to strike the right balance and we have some good guardrails around that. But, you know, it's it's all essentially, you know, up to. You know, like I said, there's no perfect answer to that and we can always take a look at it again and then we can always go through this process and, you know, kind of go through the analysis again. We we always have that at our as our tool toolkit, right? That we can go back and take another look and do another cost of service analysis and come back to the board with with an updated projection. But I think we have it really close to being right, at least in the short term. I think it's it's it'd be hard to see it going down again, and I think we have just just enough of a kind of a bounce back in there to to represent, you know, kind of reality and how most people are thinking with after a wet year. And, you know, there'll be, you know, kind of some relief. And so without editorializing too much more, I think we tried to strike that balance and it's not going to be perfect, but I think, you know, the risks are not, you know, outweighed on one side or the other. And it's kind of, you know, what you do when you go through this process.
I think also, Ranji, we I think we're putting two and a half million dollars incremental reserves away each year. So that gives us about three and a half percent reduction in variable revenue buffer. And we have that twenty million dollar reserve currently, so I don't think we're going to use all of it, but it looks like we have. Somewhere along the lines of a ten or fifteen percent disaster scenario reduction. To get us through that and hopefully it won't be more than that, but that that seems conservative to me.
That's a good way of putting it, yeah.
Super helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, I'll have Darren come up here and start going through the operations budget and I'm I'll stay with him here for any questions you may have along the way.
Good evening, directors. Darren Machado, Operations Director. Tonight I'll be talking about the Operations Division. And before we get into the budget or the preliminary budget for the operating. Or look at the preliminary operating budget for the Operations Division, I want to talk about the Operations Division and the work that's being done within the division. So. Kind of an operations overview, we'll look at core functions, the organization of the division, we'll look at the facilities and assets that are being managed. The operation and maintenance of the system and then we'll take a look at the Operations Division budget. So the operations core functions kind of split into three groups here. It's the operation and maintenance of our water system. This is getting the water from our lakes to our customers on a daily basis. Water treatment, it's maintaining and operating our three water treatment facilities. And then the third one there is support services, which would be our auto shop and warehouse. So when we look at the staffing for operations, we have a total of ninety seven F T Es in the Operations Division. It's ten different departments and forty different job classifications. It really does take a wide range of job classifications and skill sets to maintain and operate our water system on a daily basis. And here's an org chart for the division and it stops at the department level, but I do want to take a minute here to talk about. The departments and what their each department is doing and kind of the area of responsibility. So as we start, we'll move from left to right. If we look at the first department, which is. The control, whoops. Previous, yeah, previous. There we go. Sorry about that. We'll start with the Control Systems Department. So this department oversees and maintains our SCADA system. And our SCADA system is what we use to pretty much monitor and operate our water system remotely. We have staff in our operations center twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, as well as at two of our treatment plants. And we heavily rely on the SCADA system to monitor and make adjustments throughout our system on a regular basis. And then the next department is our Distribution System Department. These would be our Distribution System Operators. Who sit over in the corp yard in our Operations Distribution Center. That is staffed again twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, and they do run our water system. Again, monitoring SCADA, monitoring tank levels, pumps. And also taking calls from other jurisdictions or consumers regarding issues or answering questions. The next department is our Corrosion Control Department. And this department maintains our corrosion control program. And currently we just have a little under seven thousand. Corrosion test sites and about four hundred and fifty miles of pipe, which are under protection, cathodic protection. And then this department also provides input for new construction as far as cathodic protection systems and how they should be designed. The next department we'll take a look at is the Mechanical and Electrical Department. This department maintains all of our pumps throughout our distribution system, as well as the chemical feed pumps at our treatment plants. And also works on our electrical systems at our pump houses, at our pumps and at the treatment plants. Next department is the water treatment. Again, these are our water treatment operators working at our three water treatment plants, San Geronimo, Bon Tempe and Ignacio. And San Geronimo and Bon Tempe are staffed. Twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. And they are operating the treatment plants and making adjustments as needed. To ensure water water quality. The next department we'll look at is our System Maintenance Department. This is a fairly large department. These are our our service crews. So these are the crews that would respond to water main breaks. Also within the division are our first responders who respond to water emergencies such as water main breaks, hit hydrants, consumer leaks that need to be isolated. And then also within this division is our leak detection team. That's two water system technicians and our leak detection program, which part of the Strategic Water Supply Assessment Plan. Or actions was to take a look at the district's water loss as a whole. And one of the components to controlling water loss is our is our leak detection team in our program. So we'll be going through our program, trying to identify any opportunities to where we may be able to improve and reduce water losses throughout our system. The next department is our Facilities Maintenance Department. These are our carpenter crews who take care of the actual buildings at our pump houses, as well as this administrative building in the corp yard. They take care of the paint, siding, roof, fencing, drainage. Really cover a wide range of responsibilities. And this is also the department that would respond if we have debris stuck on a log boom on one of our lakes. One of the barges has come loose from its anchoring system. Graffiti on a tank. Yeah, just a wide range of responsibility for that department. Next department is our auto shop. They maintain our fleet of about total of about two hundred and twenty six vehicles and equipment. Making sure everything's maintained at a high level, making sure our fleet stays in compliance with regulatory requirements. Next department is our Special Projects Crew. This crew handles all the sludge at the water treatment plants. And what I mean by handle sludge, they they move it from the beds at San Geronimo. Lay it out to dry and keep turning it over and get it to a point where we can transport it to a landfill. And then at at Bon Tempe, there's a large pond there that gets pumped out. And again, we have to handle the sludge and turn it over until it's it's dry enough to where we can actually load it and haul it to a landfill. And then this department also handled handles the maintenance down at our Pelican Way Yard in Santa Fel. This is where we store all of our pipe, welded steel and PVC pipe for capital projects. But it's also where all of our service crews on a daily basis dump spoils from smaller projects, small leak repairs, maintenance activities. And then our special projects will sift that material, recycle what we can and then haul out in bulk to a landfill with our larger trucks and equipment. And then they'll also. Keep the backfill material there such as class two base rock, sand and cutback for our service crews to use while they backfill excavations. And they also take on larger projects. The system maintenance crews usually will complete a job in a day. The special projects crew will take on larger projects that'll be more of a time commitment. Could be capital or or maintenance. And then last department on here is our warehouse. So our warehouse, we have about nine hundred and fifty items that we keep in inventory. So our warehouse staff monitors inventory levels as well as issues, materials. And this warehouse serves as a warehouse for both operations and capital improvement projects. So a lot, a lot of material moves through the warehouse. Excellent. So when we look at facilities and assets managed. Maintain over nine hundred miles of pipe, one hundred and twenty six storage tanks, ninety seven pump stations. And and at those ninety seven pump stations, each pump station usually has at least two pumps. So we have redundancy there in case we have to pull one out of service. So we have about a hundred and ninety three pumps in total. And then a hundred and ninety six facility sites. These would be sites where we have a pump or pump and tank, three water treatment plants, fleet of vehicles and equipment. Our warehouse and then our Pelican Way Yard in Santa Fel. And then we have staff on call to respond to water emergencies. This picture here is a large water main break. It's a couple of years old now in Kent Field, but this was a twelve inch cast iron water main break that happened early evening on a weeknight. But we have crews on call, ready to respond and make these repairs and work throughout the night and into the morning if need be. As well as, so the emergencies like this are fairly obvious, but we also have emergencies to where we we have one of our control stacks on on call as well. In case we have a problem with the SCADA system, as well as our M and E department, if we have a problem with a pump or a regulator that we need to address, they can't wait until normal business hours. So as we. Get into the budget here, so the Operations Division overview. So our baseline operating budget is thirty one million ninety seven F T E. And our primary functional areas are the operations and maintenance of the water system, water treatment. And our support services, which are the auto shop and warehouse. And then, yeah, we have ongoing collaboration with Engineering Division and Water Resources Division for day to day activities and capital planning. And the department baseline capital budget is about one million dollars in the automotive services and facilities maintenance area. And then as we look at the preliminary operating budget by expenditure category. Here, if we look to and Brett kind of touched on this earlier, if we looked at, if we look at materials and supplies, we'll see. An increase of thirty five percent. This, the majority of this is for water treatment chemicals. We just received bids back recently in the last, I want to say in the last couple of weeks. And chemical costs for fiscal year twenty four are up forty two percent compared to fiscal year twenty three. And then if we look at the next category, District Operations, you'll see an increase there of sixty eight percent. And that's largely due to the increase in paving cost, although engineering has taken over managing the paving budget or excuse me, the paving contract. The the paving budget is still within operations and the system maintenance budget. And then, yeah, if we look by categories, kind of in the pie charts down below. But those are the the two big increases that I wanted to touch on.
Excuse me, Darren, Darren, the the jump in chemical prices is striking.
Yeah.
Do you see these types of fluctuations? I mean, I mean, do they go up and then come down?
Not not this drastic, but in the last several years with these two particular chemicals, sodium hypochlorite and zinc orthophosphate. The sodium hypochlorite came in at ninety eight percent or excuse me, ninety seven percent higher than last year. And the zinc orthophosphate, I think, was at ninety eight percent higher than last year. But, uh, yeah, these are pretty significant increases. But we're kind of, we're seeing this also like in in our warehouse with supply chain issues and supply and demand, like just some certain fittings that are made of a certain material. They they just can't get them or the the manufacturers stop making them. So but we are slowly starting to recover, at least for supply chain issues in our warehouse. And I'm thinking we may see that on the chemical side as well. So looking at proposed changes and cost drivers, so baseline cost drivers, we talked about the paving and and the construction contracts. And as well as the water treatment chemicals. And then the proposed changes that would start in fiscal year twenty twenty five would be the addition of a valve exercising program. So just a little bit about our water system valves, we use them just critical assets to operating and maintaining our water system. We use them all the time to shut off areas, control flows of water. And these pictures here, that one valve is a valve that's been in service for over fifty years. And these pictures here, that one valve is a valve that's been in service for over fifty years. And you can see the tubercles built up inside of it, and then you can see the new valve on the right. And then as we look at starting up a valve exercising program, so we have about sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy-nine mainline valves, ranging from two inch to thirty-six inch valve. And we want to be able to operate these valves through one full cycle, one open full, one open and close cycle fully on a on a regular schedule. The recommendation is to do it once a year if possible, if not, once every two years. And and if we just take a look at our valves and our and our and our main lines, there's sixteen thousand there, but we also have about eight thousand additional valves that we just call line valves, which would control like flow to our fire hydrants or fire lines or individual services that are of a larger size. But in total, if we were to replace all of our valves, we would probably be looking at somewhere in the in the neighborhood of forty-five million dollars. So we do want to maintain our valves. We want to be able to rely on them when they are needed and and we want them to operate as intended. So staffing and equipment that would be needed to bring bring in this this program would be the addition of two full-time employees and then two new vehicles with valve exercising equipment. Yeah, that's that's all for the operations slides. I can take any questions.
Thanks a lot, Darren. I think that's probably the most detail I've seen on all the different aspects of operations.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next area we'll present, we'll have Sean Horn present the the watershed department budget here.
Sean Horn, Watershed Resources Manager. We'll go over the watershed budget and overview. Of kind of how the budget breaks down between the five functional divisions or departments within the watershed. So our budget is seven point four million dollars. We have twenty-two full-time positions, quite a bit fewer than Darren's division, but we are supported by special projects and other parts of operations often, as well as engineering administration. So a lot of support that comes from other divisions within the district to the watershed, but our five primary functional areas are watershed protection, which is our rangers, our watershed maintenance group, our vegetation and natural resource and volunteer group, our fisheries department and our grants and legislative group. Or we have a baseline capital budget of a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for equipment. That's our ranger vehicles, some of our fisheries equipment for monitoring, vegetation management equipment and other maintenance equipment for the watershed. Our in our CIP budget, we do have four million dollars additional funding that helps support our biodiversity fires and fuels integrated plan and helps with our roads and trails maintenance on the watershed, as well as our watershed facilities, so you think face of dams and other facilities that exist on the watershed that we need to maintain. And then we have a number of grant-funded projects. We won't go into all of them this evening, but you've heard about the fisheries restoration grant revenue that we've been generating for designing restoration work in Lagunitas Creek. Yesterday, we got notified that we've received another grant from DWR to support that work. So it's ongoing and continuing to get funding. We've received funding for Azalea Hill and also the implementation of our BFFIP. If you break that down on the pie chart, as we've been doing in previous slides, you can kind of see that about twenty-seven percent of the watershed budget is our Rangers Department. Fisheries is about ten percent, our veg and natural resource group is about eighteen percent. Our watershed admin is about ten, twelve percent, and then our maintenance group is about thirty-two percent of the overall budget. Similar chart that we've been showing you tonight, the kind of key points to look at here are if you look at the personnel services, there's about an eight percent increase. That's actually one filling a ranger that was approved in the budget twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three cycle that we held and did not fill during the drought period. And so that's filling that position now in this next budget cycle. And then also a reorganization that brought our grants and legislative group, which is one coordinator position into the watershed department. And so then that is captured in that increase there. And then the capital purchases, you see a small increase, the percentage wise, it looks large, but when you look at the numbers, it's about a twenty thousand dollar, thirty thousand dollar increase. So overall, about an eight percent increase. You can see kind of in line with the rest of the district's budgets, personnel services are most kind of largest kind of category. And then our district operations and you'll hear BFFIP mentioned a number of times in my presentation, and and that's kind of what's capturing that twenty-three percent is a large portion of that and implementing that in the operations.
Sean, is it fair to say that with that eight percent increase in your budget, your percentage of the total budget is going down with this? Right? So everywhere, all in all, everything else is going up twenty-two percent?
And it's a slight increase, but yeah, not in not as much as other departments.
I was just saying that so twenty-two percent includes a lot of the capital investments, right? So operating wise, I think it's thirteen percent. So it's 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 in line.
Yes, thanks. So some of the drivers behind the increases, and we are seeing environmental fees increase specifically for permits, and we've been much more focused on culvert repair repairs that have been requiring permits and also our restoration work that we're planning requires permits. It's a cost that we, you know, didn't have in previous years. We've been embarking on a recreation management planning process and have kind of next steps for that. And then we also identified in our wildfire resiliency planning process, a watershed evacuation plan that we budgeted for. Some of the proposed increases relate to increasing our BFFIP funding, really the scale of work that we're doing on the watershed and then kind of focusing, and I'll talk to this in previous next slides, is a ranger and training program with a kind of a focus on enhancing our Rangers Department. So I'm going to step through each of our departments just a little bit to give you some more details. In our fisheries group, we have two staff and we're supported by two AmeriCorps watershed stewardship program participants. It's a great support network for our fishery staff to do their field work on an annual basis. Those are two people that work with us for eleven years or eleven months, sorry. Very efficient. We've been working with that program for fifteen years, I believe now. Our fisheries program is kind of guided by our Lagunitas Creek stewardship plan, all in alignment with our water board order W nine WR ninety-five dash seventeen, which kind of directs us to do fisheries lifecycle monitoring and Lagunitas Creek watershed. And then our fisheries does support our water operations in terms of responding to main breaks throughout the community when they're near sensitive stream and our fisheries department will do surveys within those streams to ensure that we haven't had impacts. And if we do have impacts, then to document those impacts appropriately. And we have stream restoration planning and coordination that our fisheries department is embarking on and and focuses on an annual basis, and that is kind of leading to some of the cost drivers within this budget unit. And we do anticipate needing to do some monitoring that's focused around the restoration projects that we're implementing. That's a requirement of the permits and the grants that we get. And then we're also looking at opportunities to expand our passive integrated transponder pit tag monitoring program throughout the watershed. So we currently have two antennas and we're looking to broaden that system to better support our fisheries monitoring effort. So we also have our natural resource and our volunteer program. We have three full-time staff in this group and six watershed aides who are seasonals. This is really for BFFIP compliance. So our BFFIP budget breaks down into a couple of different categories, and this one focuses on all the surveys that we do before we do any work to ensure that we're not having an impact. It's also supporting our prescribed burn planning that we're doing on the watershed to look at how we reintroduce fire in a beneficial way. And then this is where we do our rare plant and invasive plant monitoring work on the watershed. Our watershed volunteer outreach, you know, happens within this group, and that's kind of one of those key elements that the district has an opportunity to bring people out to the watershed, connect them with their drinking water source. And so we're funding work out of this budget unit for that. And then we have our broader environmental planning work that goes on. So this could be any of our wildlife surveys that we do on an annual basis to understand the biodiversity and the changes on the landscape. Some of the cost drivers around this is we have been focused on bringing another AmeriCorps type position into this group through UC Berkeley's Grizzly Core Program. That's a great opportunity for us to have an additional eleven-month staff person working with us to support kind of all the things going on in this this group. And then also we do see some increases in BFFIP annual compliance. As we increase acres, we have to increase the compliance that we're doing for that. Within our watershed maintenance group, we have seven staff members, four seasonal watershed aides. And these folks focus on our roads and trails management, our roads being culvert repairs, service road maintenance, really to allow us to get to our water facilities, to allow for emergency response, and then also doing other facilities maintenance on the watershed. You can think of our Sky Oaks Ranger Station, Ranger Residence, dam maintenance and and the such. And then they also help implement the BFFIP. So they're the ones out burning piles today on the watershed. They're helping with our forest restoration work when it requires heavy equipment. We're doing about fifteen hundred acres a year under our BFFIP currently. Seven people can't do all of that, so we rely heavily on contractors to support that, but this is our in-house workforce for that. Cost drivers, again, you know, part of our BFFIP budget lies within our operational budget, and this is the kind of budget unit that falls within. And then we do see inflationary costs associated with some of our culverts and some of our other materials that we purchased to help maintain our facilities on the watershed. And then our ranger staff, we have six rangers full-time and we have one contract deputy, and then they're supported through three watershed aides. This is really to enforce our watershed regulations and facility security. There's also responding with medical support when visitors are in need of help. They're responsible for wildland fire response and prescribed burning on the watershed. They help with search and rescue. And then they're also doing visitor outreach and watershed interpretation as kind of the face of the the watershed because they're out there on the trails and the roads on a daily basis, interacting with visitors. We do, you know, want to invest in this in this department here. The rangers are are a key to how we operate the watershed. And so we're looking at developing a ranger trainee program, really with the eye on kind of successional development within that group. There are a number of really certifications that are required for someone to become a ranger. And what we've seen in recent recruitments is there's not a lot of candidates who have all of those requirements that are interested. And so we see a kind of a need to kind of reach out into the community and give an opportunity to bring people in with fewer credentials and train them up to become a ranger in the future. So we're looking at promoting and developing that in this new budget cycle.
Sean, are are the aides full-time equivalent? So they paid or?
They're six-month positions.
Six-month positions and paid?
And paid, yes. Yeah. And then we're looking at adding one additional ranger, but that was the ranger that was approved in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget cycle. So the final group that we have in this division is the watershed administration grant legislative group. There's three staff in here. This is our administrative services. So everything from visitor services in the form of parking permits, research permits, our contracts for everything that happens on the watershed that we move through Sky Oaks office, all the visitor services that we provide. And then doing our grant and legislative and fundraising work comes out of this group now. And then long-term planning, so you can think of our e-bike review, our development of Azalea Hill rest trail restoration project, update of our watershed census survey, the recreation planning process that we've been embarking on happens out of this fund center. The cost drivers, the last year during the drought, we started to look for consultant support to help us with federal funding. And so that's one of the reasons and that we are so successful in getting written into the Water Infrastructure Development Act. And that's something that we're intending to carry forward in the next fiscal year. That's also helped us get some of the federal grant funding that we brought in over the last year. And then the watershed planning studies, looking at kind of outcomes of the recreation management planning process and kind of next steps for that are kind of budgeted here.
Sean, can you remind us about the twenty-eight million that's coming through the?
Yeah, so the water infrastructure development act, that was something that the district worked to get a number of projects kind of into that bill written in, and we haven't defined those projects yet. We're working to set up meetings with the Army Corps of Engineers who would have to put that into their budget in order for the district to make use of those funds. And so we have a list of projects to discuss with them and then see what will fit within their budget, and then we'll look for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four core budget to get the projects into if possible.
And and so the the largest that we could receive through this is up to twenty-eight million dollars.
That's correct.
Infrastructure development programs. Thank you.
So reviewing kind of what we talked about at the board retreat, the watershed priorities, BFFIP addendum, that's going to help us increase some of our vegetation management acres. That's going to help us apply to more forest restoration grant funding opportunities. Moving forward to Lagunitas Creek restoration implementation, some of the design and monitoring and construction that has to happen, looking at expanding our pit tag monitoring program, continuing to implement Azalea Hill restoration, specifically working on a retaining wall near Polinas Fairfax Road that we brought a contractor on and had a kickoff meeting today for. And then looking at some of our social trail and habitat restoration efforts in that over the next year or so. And then our watershed roads and trails, expanding upon our recreation planning process and continuing with our roads and trails management plan that we currently have to replace culverts, address a number of winter storm repairs that kind of popped up from this heavy winter. And then also looking at kind of next steps with stewardship and outreach that we can do to better connect with the community and potential updates to our roads and trails plan. So that's an overview of the watershed budget. If you have any questions, otherwise we'll go to the water resource division.
Good evening, Paul Selay, Water Resources Director. Good news, we are about halfway through. I take my glasses off. It looks so much better now. Can I have the mouse? I think to the mouse, thanks. So, okay, similar to the other presentations, we have a brief, brief overview of the Water Resources Division this evening. Our baseline operating budget's about seven point six million. There are around twenty-five FTEs in in the division. In addition to sort of the water resources mandate of the division, we have four functional, four other functional areas in terms of water efficiency, which is conservation, water quality, backflow reclamation, safety and emergency response. And in order to deliver all of these services to our customers, you know, we we need to communicate with our engineering colleagues for long-term issues and projects and with our operations colleagues for sort of day-to-day operations. Not much of a capital budget. It does vary a little bit, just under a hundred thousand, and largely this is associated with safety equipment, laboratory equipment. Looking at our water efficiency program, the funding for this program is about two point six million and in in three sort of legs of every conservation or water efficiency program in terms of community engagement, which is focused on education for our customers and a number of different programs that you see up there. And that's kind of backed up and and leverages that education in the form of incentive programs that we have. And, you know, like, for example, the garden grant program, which would be, you know, grant for institutions, organizations that would like to create sort of a model water efficient garden, and we can provide a grant for them to do that. And then other studies that you'll be hearing more about on at the next water efficiency meeting in terms of water loss, the water efficiency master plan and so on. And then with those two, the the sort of broad education, community engagement and incentives, there's also regulatory enforcement piece around prohibitions around the use of water.
Paul, Paul, sorry, the budget for our water efficiency program, that does not include the additional budget for conservation, the conservation elements of our water supply enhancement program. Is that right?
It does.
It does.
Yeah, and that water conservation element is about about three hundred thousand. Yeah, so that's that's included in there. Our safety and emergency response group, as the name implies, is really focused around, you know, keeping our, you've heard a lot from Darren's group, for example, with ninety-seven full-time employees and the wide range of jobs and skills and responsibilities that they have. And they do face really very real hazards in in in, you know, performing that work in terms of working around heavy equipment, around traffic. He talked about the mechanical and electrical workers dealing with electrical safety programs and so on and the like. Our safety program then is really dedicated to ensuring that those folks can do their jobs safely and without a fear of injury. And with safety comes a big component of training. So not only do you have the different safety programs shown on the inset here, those are the the written programs and those all need to comply with OSHA regulations. There's a training component for our staff that goes with those. And of course, emergency responses there to really, it's our commitment to our customers that we're going to continue to do our utmost to provide them water, even in the most dire circumstances. Now, the funding for this group is just shy of a million, about eight hundred thousand dollars. Water quality, again, the theme with water resources is largely service-related, consistent with the rest of the organization. I didn't do that. Okay. So consistent with the rest of the organization, water quality, really, this is about protecting our customers and ensuring that our water is meets the highest standards for our customers. And overall, water quality comprises, and at least in my mind, obviously, the water quality. for our customers. And overall, water quality comprises, and at least in my mind, obviously, the water quality lab as well as the black backflow and cross connection control group. We'll talk a little bit about those departments in a moment. So in general, water quality is protecting our customers, ensuring the water is safe to drink. The lab, of course, there are about seven folks in the lab, four within the lab itself and three field technicians who accomplish all of the regulatory and compliance sampling for our drinking water programs. The lab is currently accredited under the Environmental Lab Accreditation Program, though that is changing. There's a new standard to be migrating the lab over to, in fact, all of these labs that are currently accredited under ELAP or the Environmental Lab Accreditation Program will need to move over to the TNI accreditation standard. Four main areas of analysis that we perform in the lab, microbiology, general physical properties of water, things like alkalinity, temperature, pH. And then, of course, you know, the regulatory components such as disinfection byproducts and different inorganics that we can, we can, we can look at.
Well, I I feel like you've you've noted in the past the possibility of outsourcing some analysis. Is that? Is that a cost effective option?
It can be, yes. And we are looking at that. And we hope to be migrating some of our analysis out. Bring that information to you. By the cross connection control and backflow group. So this is, you know, if you have a swimming pool or a source, alternate source of water, might be recycled water or well. This group ensures that that potentially contaminated water doesn't find its way back into the water system. So they're really looking at water quality out in the distribution system in terms of once it's gone through the meter onto a customer's property and making sure that there's no potential hazards to the distribution system. We, of course, also operate and have operated since 1979. In fact, the drought of 76 was when they first started piloting recycled water here at Marin Water District. We've been operating a treatment plant out of the Los Felinas Valley Sanitation District since then. About 2017 or so, that plant was shut down and we sort of threw in with Los Felinas to upgrade their membrane facility. And that's helped us ensure the future recycled water for our customers in this area of San Rafael. In 2022, we produced about 700 acre feet of water, serving just over 330 customers. A pretty wide variety of uses. It's, we don't have a lot of golf courses in Marin to to serve very easily. So that that means that we have to get kind of creative in terms of our water use. And over the years, we pioneered a number of water uses. I think we had the first commercial laundry, the first cooling tower or the first car wash. And it, I think, 33 San Pablo out at the Civic Center is one of the first set of condominium or apartment complexes that's fully plumbed with recycled water. So a number of kind of firsts for Marin in terms of water recycling, though we've been doing it so long. Those are all passe and everybody else is sort of doing it as well by now.
I was in when in 2017, was there an expansion in capacity as well for producing recycled water?
And not really an expansion in capacity. No, it's pretty similar capacity. We had about a two M G D capacity previously and we have about a 1.8 firm capacity now. Though overall, the Los Felinas plant has some additional capability beyond that.
And I've heard that new multi unit developments in San Rafael will require double plumbing. Is is that something that? Are we?
In in the areas that are proximate or front water main, our district code currently would require them to use recycled water for all approved uses. So so those would automatically sort of get triggered if they front a recycled water main.
And we have the capacity to support that.
Yes. And then the final piece of of the Water Resources Division is sort of the Water Resources itself in terms of water supply. And I think you are all familiar with this slide by now. And this is just a snapshot to remind us that that is kind of a primary area of focus for this group as well. So our work plan then in priorities in in terms of water conservation, our our goal is to keep water use as low as possible. We're going to continue to develop effective water savings programs. And in the coming year, the board will hear about the water master plan, water loss review study, Darren mentioned the valve exit, I mean, so the leak detection crew. But we're going to be taking a broader look at technology and seeing how we can apply that to water loss. In terms of water quality, our goals remain that we meet or exceed all federal and state drinking water standards. We're now piloting, we have installed again, collaborating with our operations group and our engineering group to install an online chlorine analyzer, sort of a solid state analyzer, and we'll be checking that out to see how that operates over the next several months. So our, we'll be managing taste and odors in our lakes. And of course, I mentioned the new laboratory accreditation standard. In terms of service, safety and emergency responses, continue to focus on the safety of our employees in the workplace. And our goal is to update and provide training on the district's emergency operations plan. And backflow reclamation, they're going to continue to monitor the distribution system for threats to the water quality and of course, in a way that provides the highest level of service for our customers. And of course, water resources, we're going to continue with the board's direction, the implementation of the roadmap. So for our budget in the same table we've been showing for the other groups, overall, it's pretty flat, about 9%. If you look at that 2024 change number there. There are a couple areas, though, that you could look at, general admin and sort of gone up by 42%. Most of that is in in the form of government fees. So we pay fees to the state water board for the operation of both the drinking water system and the recycled water system. And those fees have gone up quite substantially. In terms of district operations, about a 33% increase there. And those seem to be associated with professional fees aligned with, you know, moving the lab accreditation standard it over. And then I think some additional fees for the water efficiency group. So that those sort of cost drivers I mentioned, regulatory fees. And then the changes that we're looking, we talked about to Director Kush's question earlier in terms of what changes there are for this division. It's really the water conservation element. I can, I can hear you now saying, but what about the water supply projects? Those will all be in the capital program. So we are involved in sort of the analysis of those and and sort of some of that early work. And ultimately, those projects will be delivered by our engineering group. And you'll hear that discussed in a moment. So with that, how trade places with Crystal?
Just just a quick question. I think the others had broke down the number of people in each of your different areas and I think you said there were 25 FTEs in your group and there are four primaries. How would you break down the number of people?
Yeah, so there there are about eight in conservation, eight in the lab. Then safety, there are a couple of positions and then recycled water and backflow. And then myself and Lucy are the water quality manager and and water resources director.
One more question before you tear off. The the amount of money we're spending on conservation now, and I'm sorry if I'm misunderstanding, so I apologize for the need for clarification, but going forward, this budget that that line item stays the same? Did I or just increase to 300,000 was that? And I apologize for the confusion. I'm just trying to figure out where the how much our conservation budget will increase with this new proposal.
So we're adding about $300,000.
And that's inclusive of the 6.8 as part of the roadmap?
Yes. So so the 6.8. So the 6.8 reflects the about 1.7 million dollars for conservation over the four years. That 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 includes the programs that we identified as part of the water conservation element. Yet what's new to the budget is the $300,000 component of that.
Gotcha. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Because I thought that was what we had been spending 300. I thought it's been pretty flat, or at least it was a million and it went down, but hasn't it been about 300 per year? For for for?
Incentives?
Yeah, water conservation.
Water conservation and incentives. Yeah, what we've been spending.
So I don't think there's any additional
Versus?
Adding.
So so the budget we have for incentives is around 595 or 591. That's not changed on the incentive side. The water conservation element, the next phase of it is about $300,000 more geared towards marketing outreach, data analysis. And kind of, I think there's a grant match in there maybe. And so it's it's not increasing the rebate budget, but it is increasing the overall district's efforts towards conservation.
And and then it sounds like with this new grant opportunity, it could actually double the turf replacement budget. I didn't totally follow whether you said there was a match involved with that also, but it sounds really exciting.
Yeah, there there's a match is 700 and some thousand grant. So when we bring the grant back, we'll provide more granularity on the recommendation on how we spend, use that money. But it was, as I understand it, it, the application was put in to support the incentives. So it's in line with really where we're headed.
So you, so we wouldn't necessarily be approving addition additional money? For for to get that grant? You're saying you already baked it in?
Yeah, the match would be our current incentive dollars and the 700,000 of the grant plus a match collectively. I I I suppose Paul and I have talked about initially, we we, as we bring it back to the board, you know, I need to understand. Do we have options based on the nature of the grant, right? This was, the grant was submitted regionally. Or for by Sonoma Water on behalf of all the contractors targeting certain activities that I understand are the incentive based activities. So maybe it'll subsidize money that we are already spent, or there's creative ways to add to the the budget.
All right. Well, I look forward to it. I I think I'd love to see this part of our budget increased. I don't know where we find the money, but I think we can continue to do more specifically with turf replacement. It seems to be the best way to increase our water supply is is that program. And that's probably why there's grant money available for it, because I think it's proven per the call or earlier, the public comment, you know, I'm on board with the laundry landscape and some of the other programs that have shown not to pay off. So maybe there's opportunities to ship somebody around in there. I'd love to.
I think there'll be some good discussion at the next Water Efficiency Committee meeting on those subjects. Yeah.
Paul, one added that I might have missed on the budget by expenditure category, capital purchases were much higher over the last, the last two years. And in the next budget, they drop by 60%. What what was driving those those high amounts in the past?
Yeah, the past budgets, I think, were were driven for a couple of things. We had to buy some rather expensive lab equipment, GCMS, and I forget what the other instrument was, but you know, each of those are a couple hundred thousand, which would show a 200, you know, 100% increase over what we were showing as proposed. And in addition, we had budgeted a significant amount of funds in safety to purchase some equipment. You know, things like gantries to allow entry to confined spaces is a little easier. And then there were some movable handrails that we were hoping to install on different roof areas for fall protection. And I I'm not sure that we ended up expanding those funds that were budgeted. Yeah.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, we're in the home stretch. This is our last operation or division presentation, then we'll move on to capital after this. So engineering operations budget. Okay, so the baseline budget for fiscal year 24 is 13.2 million with 48 FTEs. There's five primary functional areas in engineering that's planning, design and construction. So delivering our capital program, that's three departments. Then we have a department known as Engineering Support and Development Services, and I'll talk about that more in a later slide. And of course, information technology. And and we are continuously collaborating with the operations division and water resources on our day to day activities and capital planning. We have a department baseline capital budget of 60,000. That's primarily replacements of laptop and desktop computers. We've got some some mark and locate surveying and equipment that we purchase on a regular basis and upgrade. So that's the capital budget for equipment. And then you have the breakdown of the three of the three areas in terms of how that's spent. Okay, we'll start with planning. The core functions for planning is Division of Safety of Dams Compliance. We have monthly and annual dam instrumentation reports that we produce. We have inspections of the dams that we we execute, we do dam assessments and we prepare the emergency action plans that are given to the county office of emergency services in case anything was to ever happen. And we practice those plans. We do project planning, environmental review and surveying for projects for capital projects. And also just easement rights and whatever may come up. This non capital could be charged there. Capital program planning and budgeting, master planning, we produce the local hazard mitigation plan. We did the last urban water management plan, but we're going to pass that one on to Paul next time. Hydraulic modeling. We have, we are the liaison to local jurisdictions when they have big paving projects and they're looking at our pipelines underground, make sure there's no conflicts. And we manage the Fire Flow Technical Advisory Committee. We 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 meet annually with the fire chiefs and we talk about the projects that are coming up for fire flow improvements. And we also produce our annual water rates reports. That's a photo on the right of some non structural spillway repairs that out in the Casio reservoir for Seeger Dam.
Can you give us just a quick sense of about how many people are in each of your?
Sure, there's a four in planning, relatively small group. Engineering design is actually probably one of our largest groups. We do the engineering, the engineers are there, but we also have all of the drafters in that group producing the AutoCAD drawings. We have field measurements that we go out in the field for design purposes. We process, you know, the the bids go out for for award and for processing. We have communications with the community on construction projects. We have a number of specialty consultant contracts that are billed to the capital projects, typically geotechnical analysis, some specialty for design and electrical contracts. And then we also manage the reimbursement agreements for local jurisdictions. Oh, for that group of that's the largest year, maybe 13, around there. Core functions for construction engineering is, these are construction inspectors and construction administration staff. Maybe 12, 10 to 12 in there. Sorry, I don't have the numbers offhand. We can get it for you, though. We do all the submittal reviews when a contract is awarded. We give the contractor the notice to proceed and we document the project as it moves along. We handle invoicing and change orders and the permit conditions and for all of the construction projects for whether it's environmental or stormwater control. The inspectors ensure enforcement of our contract specifications, environmental monitoring mitigation is done. They note all their field observations. And they coordinate with district staff on capital projects. The construction engineering also recently took over management of the paving contract. So they manage when there's a repair in Darren's group for operations, they then follow up with the contractor for the final paving after the repair is made. So we manage all of that work with inspections and and invoicing for that. And there's also a separate contract for compaction testing as part of paving. How we do paving, you have to do compaction testing through a separate contract for that. And they also manage potholing for when we get local jurisdictional requests to pothole a road ahead of a paving project to see how deep our pipe is and to make sure it's not gonna, there's not going to be any construction conflicts with the paving project. So they manage potholing. Next, we have the Engineering Support and Development Services Group, which is loading. Sorry, there's a delay between this laptop and the screen. There it is. Again, this is about 10, 10 or 12. So this group consists in terms of FTEs, Development Services and Support Services. So we handle requests for new service connections, new meters, new service laterals. If somebody needs a new hydrant, increase their fire flow. Service upgrades. Currently, we have 100 and about 159 service requests in queue. And there's a lot of work that has to go into coordinating with operations. We call them reimbursable jobs. We get a deposit from the consumer. We we We, we manage the work, any contracts that are need to be let. And then sometimes the work is done by the private homeowner's contractor. Sometimes it's done by us. So we manage it with field crews in, in order to install the new service. And then we do all of the accounting for deducting the cost from their deposit and returning their refund. And so we also manage records and as built. So after a construction project is completed, the as builds come from the CAD group and then we update the GIS layers. And we also update the GIS layers for any pipeline repairs or additional service installations. We have about 400 updates currently in queue. So we have a group of folks that are GIS technicians that work on the GIS layer. So this is in addition to the, you'll see in a moment, the GIS technicians that administer the GIS servers, which is in the IT group. These are actually the people that use GIS on a regular basis. We have mark and locate staff in this group that go out and when requested by 811 before you dig, we get about 400 requests a week. So you can imagine there's quite a number of staff that are out there, you know, looking for pipes with audio equipment and marking the street ahead of any other construction projects that might be ongoing in the Marin County in our service area. We also manage real property. We have about 40 active leases. We're in negotiations for at least continuously for 10 or 15 more. We manage encroachment permits for telecom companies that might be wanting to access our sites to, to see if it's something they might want to pursue. We, we issue easements, we manage our easement rights, we, we manage our deeds and titles, rights away, and then encroachment permits. We also put together in this group, the pipeline extension agreements. Whenever we have a larger development that requires us extending the water main, there's agreements that we have to put together in contracts for building out additional piping and distribution system. So actually we have one coming up pretty soon in the next month, then we'll go through that whole process with you in detail. We're going to use it as an opportunity to inform the new board members as to how pipeline extension agreements are put together. And then we also manage our connection fee. So anytime there is a new service request, we manage that, that fee that people paid in order to buy into the system. That's actually a picture of my water meter and you notice the flume device that's off to the right. All right. So information technology core function, there's nine people in this group. They manage the help desk, GIS, servers, Microsoft Exchange, all of our servers for SAP, for, you know, open text, texts and our file servers. We have, we do, we manage the hardware maintenance and upgrades. We have a co-location facility out at Rancho Cordova and also some servers here locally at Nellin. We manage wifi and phones, computers, monitors, projectors, all of our fiber optics connections and networking. We have a, we manage cybersecurity and disaster recovery. So backups of everything in case we ever got attacked for, for ransomware. We have the enterprise resource program that we maintain for SAP, for accounting, softwareing, all the software that we have. Open test document is our document management system. Where our executed agreements are kept and very, you know, the official record of documents here at Marin Water. And we have a number of technical, technical support contracts, as you can imagine. And then we also manage Citrix remote desktop and mobile pass two factor authentication applications. There's a photo on the right of the integration between our GIS system and SAP. So a little bit about the budget, 13.2 million for fiscal year 24. Again, the bulk of that is personnel services. We are seeing a, an increase in district operations costs, which I'll go into in more detail on a next couple of slides. And as to what that entails, most of that cost is IT related, about 600,000 of that increase is IT related. And I'll go into more detail on that. Baseline cost drivers. So the, the budget that we currently operate with, most of the costs are in these categories. Annual fees for dams, about 200 grand, 220 grand a year, software licenses would probably be the bulk of it. We have ESRI licenses, we have number of software programs, as you can imagine that we have to maintain. Open text alone is about 70 grand a year to keep that license active. We have the co-location facility lease out in Rancho Cordova. We manage repair contracts and support services contracts for technical support of our software systems and our hardware systems. And then there's a number of non-capital engineering service contracts. For example, the potholing ahead of local jurisdictional work. Go into some of the drivers for the proposed changes. So the top five bullets that you see there are mostly are all the IT increases. So for example, we recently upgraded all of our servers out at Rancho Cordova. It's a big capital project coming in around $800,000. Now that's our primary location for most of our servers. So we had to upgrade the networking. So we now have dedicated fiber optics and networking between there and here, and also up to all of our satellite locations. For example, we recently installed microwave in order to increase the bandwidth that goes to the Bon Tempe water treatment plant. It used to be the case that anytime anybody was on Zoom, they couldn't make a phone call because we have a voice over internet protocol. Now we have a thousand percent increase in bandwidth to Bon Tempe because of microwave and fiber improvement. So that cost alone is about $170,000 increase in the operations budget to keep the fiber optics communication systems going. We've increased our cybersecurity monitoring, about $50,000 additional costs in cybersecurity monitoring. Technical support contracts would probably be the biggest increase there. As we installed all of our new servers, we now have a support contract to do server administration on that. That cost is, is new and the board approved it for this fiscal year was, you know, so now we're catching up to increase the budget to continue that support contract moving forward. But that also includes support contracts, contract for the help desk and for, we've increased the annual support contracts for our SAP support as well. So we've had a number of retirements in accounting and new staff. And so they've, they, we've been using our SAP consultant a little bit more frequently as they get up to speed. We do expect at some point in the couple, couple of years forward, that we'll be able to reduce some of these support contracts as we get new staff in and we can train them up on administering these, these systems. Web hosting and AV support used to be in the communications department. We've moved it over to IT. That's about 50 grand a year. That's the, the CMCM system here for our hybrid meetings. So that's going to continue into the future. And then software licensing has increased. And we've added some water rights reporting software, our hydraulic modeling and software licenses going up. Our ESRI GIS license went up because we went from individual user license to a network enterprise system. So there's a number of increases in software licensing. And then there's a $150,000 increase in the engineering, technical support and planning contracts. We're hoping to do a surplus land assessment in the coming year, as well as we're going to be bringing on some electrical engineering support. We're hoping to update now that we have the roadmap, the hazard mitigation plan and in order to add some projects for future grant funding opportunities. And part of the hazard mitigation grant applications is to do benefit cost analysis and seismic analyses for future projects. So we're going to need some additional professional services dollars for some engineering support service contracts. And electrical studies. Okay. So with that, some of the priorities that we presented at the board retreat back in February, we'll be finalizing the water system master plan and updating the risk analysis, the heat map in terms of what projects are a priority for us and developing 10 and 30 year plans. We are planning to finalize it IT strategic plan and then move into SAP conversion. We'll be issuing an RFP for a needs assessment and options review this year. And then moving on to vendor selection and development of professional service contract for implementation. The actual, and then also in the IT group is, well, sorry, in the work plan for engineering, we did present strategies and approaches to helping to offset the increased requirements for paving. And so we, we working on that. We recently, actually I can, I can tell you that last week we met with a consortium of water utilities and university professors to try to put together a standard for paving that we can work with moving forward as a, as a Bay Area group, but then also, as is the case many times, it's really in terms of negotiations and collaborations with local jurisdictions. And we have had some, some, some wins recently in terms of exemptions to paving requirements and reducing the amount, the extent, the extent of paving on some capital projects. So we, we are actually making some headway in trying to reduce the inflationary, the increase in paving costs moving forward. So we'll have more on that at a future board meeting, I'm sure. Okay. And that brings us to CIP.
Just, Crystal, do you see any movement towards consolidation amongst the different software providers? So that you might, rather than having individual contracts with a number of different software providers, they start to come together and like in the same way now, you know, Google, a Google suites allows you to have email, you know, chat meets and various other, you know, programs, Microsoft Teams. Do you see something like that happening within the, within the water industry?
Yeah. Good question. It wasn't listed on the work plan priorities, but because it was a lower cost. But one of our initiatives in the next, this year is to convert from Microsoft Exchange to Microsoft 30365, which will allow us to utilize SharePoint and get off of open text, which is end of life. It's no longer supported. So for document management, so Microsoft 0365, we can actually get rid of our Cisco phones system and move to Microsoft Teams for our VoIP, voice over internet protocol phone system. So there's a lot of consolidation there with document management phones and 365 in office. So that'll actually end up being a cost savings. We will no longer have to have, for example, the 70 grand a year we pay for open text, right? So yeah, at some point we are hoping to do that.
Good evening, directors. Alicia Irish, engineering manager of planning. And tonight I'll be going over the capital budget with you guys. So the capital budget is broken up into various categories. There's a baseline funding category as well as various allocations to certain enhancements, namely water supply, backlog stabilization for some of our aging infrastructure, funding enhancements to our BFF or our fire fuels and management program, various system enhancements, as well as funding going towards some of our larger capital projects. And I'll be going into all of these in more detail in the subsequent slides. Giving an overview of our total capital budget by these various investment categories. We have a total capital budget of close to $85 million for the next two fiscal years, with almost $35 million in fiscal year 24 and close to $50 million in fiscal year 25. Our baseline is comprised of about $20 million for each of the two fiscal years. And our baseline funding is comprised of not only our capital maintenance fee, but also rate revenue, connection fees and a little bit of interest. We have about $4 million in each fiscal year through grant funded projects. Four and a half million dollars from our fire flow improvement program. Close to $3 million in fiscal year 24 and over $9 million in fiscal year 25 going towards water supply enhancements as a result of the roadmap implementation. We have funding allocated towards our backlog stabilization and we have a ramp up. Had Brett mentioned earlier with $3 million allocated for fiscal year 24 and over $6 million in fiscal year 25. We have about half a million dollars going towards acceleration of our BFF program. And then we also have funding going towards system improvements, such as our SAP replacement. Now going into some more detail on our baseline capital budget. These numbers differ slightly from the slide before because these numbers include not only that baseline, but that baseline number, but also grants in our fire flow program, bringing our baseline total up to close to $28 million in fiscal year 24 and 29 and a half million dollars in fiscal year 25. And you can see how this baseline funding in the table on the left is distributed across our various asset class categories. There's close to 10, over $10 million going towards our pipelines in fiscal year 24, increasing by about a million dollars in fiscal year 25. We have about $5 million allocated to our storage tank asset class and our system improvement asset class over the next two fiscal years. And then we have the remainder of funding going towards our pump stations, our treatment plants and our watershed. The photo on the right is a picture of our Courtright tank system improvement project that was completed in October of 2022. This was a redwood tank in our system that was replaced with a regulator, which took this tank out of our system, bringing our redwood tank total down to five. Going into some examples on some of our baseline projects. In our pipeline asset class, we have a very exciting project in Marin City that will be taking place over the next three years. This is largely funded through a $7 million Irwin grant that we're in the final stages of securing. And this project will replace all of the cast iron pipe in Marin City, about three miles of pipe. We also have a major cast iron pipeline replacement project taking place in Cord Madera. And this project will replace about 7,200 feet of 60-year-old cast iron pipe, uh, which has seen numerous leaks in this past six months or so. And then we also have the Green Bay Boardwalk Pipeline Replacement Project, which will replace not only the pipe, but also the wooden supports that carry the pipe to the residences along the Green Bay Boardwalk. In our pump station and storage tank asset classes, we have four brick projects moving forward over the next two fiscal years. In the center, you'll see a picture of the Pine Mountain Tunnel. And this fiscal year will be starting construction on the Pine Mountain Tunnel Tank Replacement Project. This is a $25 million project that will be taking place over the next five years. And in the next two years, we'll be doing the site work portion of this project, namely excavating and installing a larger training wall to create space for the two 2 million gallon tanks that will be installed there subsequently. We also have the Bolsa Redwood Tank Replacement Project, which is similar to the Courtright System Improvement. This is a redwood tank that will be replaced by a regulator. This tank's located in the hills of Mill Valley. And it's about a half million dollar total project cost. For our pump stations, we have phase two of the Castagna Pump Station Project. And this project will further optimize the water that we receive through the North Marin Aqueduct and head, that heads towards the Ignacio Pump Station. This project costs is about 1.2 million dollars over the next two fiscal years. And finally, we have the Tocoloma Pump Station Replacement Project. Tocoloma Pump Station is our major rural water transmission pump station that takes water from both Sulu Huli and Nakasio Lakes. And it sends water down the North Marin Line, past Kent Lake to the Sandron Mo Treatment Plant. This is a $5 million project that will be taking place over the next three fiscal years, with most of the work taking place in fiscal year 25. In our next two asset classes, treatment plants and system improvements. The photo on the right shows a landslide that was created as a result of the heavy storms in this past winter. Warren Springs Lance, Warren Springs Road is a fire road that is between Phoenix Lake and Ross Reservoir. So it's a road that's frequently traveled and used by maintenance, by maintenance crews as well as for recreation. The photo on the left is the current condition of our Sandron Mo Treatment Plant roof. We'll be undertaking a $1.7 million roof replacement project to replace this roof with a fire resistant material and to improve, to stop the numerous leaks that are taking place at the treatment plant currently. And last but not least is our watershed. We have some big projects taking place here, namely the spillway repair project. This is phase two of our condition assessments. Uh, this is a multi-year project, the condition assessments. We completed phase one, the non-structural spillway repair project in 2021. And this project will be to conduct the phase two work plan as per DSOD requirements. And this project involves concrete coring, we pull and subdrain investigation. And it takes place on three of our spillways, the Seeger Dam in Nakasio, Peters Dam at Kent Lake, as well as Sulu Huli Reservoir. We also have our watershed fire fuel reduction projects as part of our BFF plan. There is a capital component in addition to the operation funding that Sean mentioned earlier. And we also have covert replacements as well as various trail restoration taking place all across our watershed. Now we'll get into the various categories that have fun enhancement funding allocated to. Now we'll get into the various categories that have fun enhancement funding allocated towards it. And we'll start with the water supply projects. The first two projects I'll be going over are the early action projects that we heard about at the most recent Operations Committee meeting. The first of which is the Phoenix Lake to Bon Tempe Connection Project. This project will install new infrastructure to pump water up from Phoenix Lake to Bon Tempe Lake. And this project will allow us to improve our operational efficiency and allow for more frequent use of this lake without the intensive system modifications that we have to do today, namely transitioning a potable pipeline to a raw water pipeline and then back to potable when we're done using it. Our engineering staff has identified three alternate routes that are currently being evaluated for feasibility. No matter which route ultimately gets chosen, we will need a new raw water pump station. And we'll also need to upsize our low lift barge pump and we'll need to install about four thousand feet of twelve to eighteen inch pipe. We plan to be in construction on this project in the next fiscal year. And we have an estimated total project cost of just over five million dollars for this project. The second project is the Suluhuli Electrification Project. And this project would bring power to the Suluhuli Reservoir and would allow us improved efficiency for our long-term operating model. This project would improve the operability and flexibility of our storage facilities, allowing us to use Suluhuli Reservoir on a more frequent basis. Right now, we currently have to rent a generator and bring in fuel to operate and utilize Suluhuli Reservoir. So we have a number of technical analysis underway in coordination with PG&E. We're working with their load team to conduct a PG&E service load study. And we're also working with their Sustainable Solutions Turnkey Team for various options that might take place behind the meter, such as permanent generator, fuel cell or solar options. And we're also looking up a potential hybrid solution that may take in a number from both of those teams. We also plan to bring on an electrical engineer for technical support as part of this process. And we'll be commencing the formal sequel process after our preferred alternative is selected. This project is about two to four years out from project completion and it's largely based on PG&E timing. So for example, in our load study, we're in the planning queue currently. And we, the latest update is that we'll get to the top of the list for the service load study in late June or early July. The total estimated project cost for this is just over seven million dollars. And we are exploring grant funding to help, help us with that cost. Those are just two of the early action projects. But we also have funding going towards some of our longer-term projects in our roadmap implementation with over twelve million dollars allocated over the next four fiscal years. So in summary, for our water supply, we plan to invest about twenty-four point six million dollars over the next four fiscal years towards our capital investments. Now moving towards enhanced funding, going towards backlog stabilization to address some of our aging infrastructure. The next three slides will show that, will show NSE curves for our tank, pipeline and pump station asset classes. These NSE curves were, are used for financial planning purposes and show a variety of scenarios for rehabilitation rates. And they've been presented at previous committee meetings. This chart here shows various scenarios of rehabilitation rates for our storage tank asset classes. And you can see two black trend lines on the left-hand side. And you can see the effect that this enhanced funding has on our storage tank program. And we are starting to move on an improved trajectory with this enhanced funding. And with the enhanced funding, we'll be able to complete about two to three tank rehabilitations per year, moving us in a positive direction. For our pipeline asset class, you can see that while even with the enhanced funding, we are still going to be slightly increasing our backlog over the next four fiscal years. We are doing so at a slower rate than if we were not to have this enhanced funding. So I would still call it being moved in a positive direction. And there's, it's just one of our larger asset classes with over nine hundred miles of pipe to manage. Our pump stations are having a similar effect, moving in a positive direction on an improved trajectory with the enhanced funding that we're allocating towards our pump station asset class. Now going over some examples of the projects that we'll be able to accomplish through this enhanced funding. On the left-hand side is a map of downtown Tiburon. And in fiscal year twenty-four, we'll be replacing one-half mile of one hundred-year-old six-inch cast iron pipe. This is in coordination with the town of Tiburon, ahead of their full-depth reclamation project. And this is a nice example of a project that would get to the top of the queue and we would need to delay other capital projects. But with this enhanced funding, we're able to accomplish not only our baseline capital projects, but also this project as well. There's also enhanced funding going towards a portion of the East Corn Madera Cast Iron Pipeline Replacement Project on Paloma, Granada and El Camino Streets, as well as a million dollars allocated towards our Tocoloma Pump Station Rehabilitation Project in fiscal year twenty-five. For our storage tanks and treatment plants, start beginning in fiscal year twenty-five and for the next three years through fiscal year twenty-seven, we'll be going to each of our three treatment plants and replacing our PLC and motor control centers. And we'll also, in fiscal year twenty-four, allocating some of this enhanced funding to help fund the completion of our San Geronimo Treatment Plant Roof Replacement. For our storage tanks in fiscal year twenty-four, we'll be recoding both of our Wolfback Ridge Tanks that are located in the hills of Sausalito, as well as replacing the two Hind Tank Redwood Tanks that are located in the hills of Santa Fel. Replacing these tanks would take our total red, redwood tank count down to two. And we plan to address those two tanks in years three and four respectively. For our watershed and system improvement categories, we have the San Clemente System Improvement Project. This project would isolate the neighborhood around the San Clemente Tank, reducing the demand from the Ross Valley System, as well as allowing for more increased turnover for the San Clemente Tank, improving the water quality in that region. We also have enhanced funding going towards our watershed, namely trail improvements, various trails across our watershed, as well as the Cataract Trail, which is a heavily used trail by visitors to our watershed. We also have specific enhanced funding going towards our watershed biodiversity, fire and fuels management program at the rate of about half a million dollars per year. This enhanced funding will allow for an additional two hundred thirty-five acres or a seventeen percent increase towards achieving these plans' goals. This acreage will be spread across the various activities that take place within our fire and fuels management program, such as French broom removal and routine fuel break maintenance. Now moving towards enhanced funding towards our system replacements. The first of which is the SAP replacement. SAP's been at use in our district for over twenty-three years and it's reached the end of its life with no more updates planned, other than security patches through the end of 2027. SAP or Enterprise Resource Planning Software is a software that we use to manage our day-to-day business for things such as accounting, HR, budgeting, project and maintenance management and customer relations. And at the board retreat, we presented the schedule for our ERP implementation plan. And in this next fiscal year, we'll be issuing an RFP and conducting a needs assessment. At the end of 2024, we'll be preparing bid documents and professional services agreements for our preferred alternative and selecting our preferred vendor. And we have a go-live target date of July first of 2026. This project has a total estimated cost of about seven to eight million dollars. Also in our system enhancement category, we have funding towards our AMI implementation. We funded this for two and a half million dollars, beginning in fiscal year twenty-seven. And we also have a grant application currently in, in process for expansion of our pilot program in underserved communities. As we've learned, AMI is an educational tool to provide customers with further opportunities to use water wisely. And it provides customer access, real-time water use data that results in increased water conservation through the use of the automatic opt-in leak detection, as well as engagement through the customer portal. And then we also have allocated funding enhancements towards some of our larger capital projects. One example of which is the Smith Saddle Tanks. The Smith Saddle Tanks are some of our larger potable transmission tanks located just over White's Hill from the San Geronimo Treatment Plant. And together, these tanks provide about ten million gallons of storage. They were last recoded on the interior in nineteen eighty-three and on the exterior in nineteen sixty-one. And you can see in the photo on the right, the current condition of the inside of the tanks. There's a total estimated project cost of twenty-eight million dollars to replace these tanks. Another larger capital project is the North Marin Line Pipeline Replacement Project. The North Marin Line, not to be confused with the North Marin Line Aqueduct in Nevada, is the transmission line from Suluhuli and Nacasio Lakes, passes Kent and goes to the San Geronimo Treatment Plant. And the piece of pipe from the bottom of Kent Lake to the San Geronimo Treatment Plant is a thirty-three inch concrete cylinder pipe that was installed in nineteen fifty-seven and has two vulnerable creek crossings along Loganitas Creek. The total estimated project cost to replace this pipe is about twenty-four million dollars. These are just two examples of some of the larger capital projects that staff has identified. The other two projects are the Ross Reservoir Tank Replacement Project, for a total estimated cost of fifteen million dollars, as well as the replacement of the clarifiers at the San Geronimo Treatment Plant, for a total estimated cost of twenty-five million dollars. There is debt service beginning in year three to implement one to two of these larger projects. And we plan to come back to the board at a later time to discuss prioritization of which of these will be implemented first. In summary, we have our backlog funding distributed across all our asset classes to help us accelerate our baseline capital work. And in addition to that baseline capital, we plan to begin to implement some, the early action water supply projects, start to address our aging infrastructure through backlog stabilization efforts, perform enhanced BFF or fire and fuel management work, and implement our SAP replacement project. And for our larger capital projects, we also have debt service factored into our future capital budget beginning in fiscal year twenty-six for one to two of the select larger projects.
So this was back to me. I'll go ahead and summarize the, the presentation today. So as I mentioned in the beginning, the district budget is increasing by twenty-two percent in fiscal twenty-four. It broadly is captured in those four sub-bullets, inflationary cost drivers, operating enhancements, water supply, capital projects, and then reserve replenishment. The revenues needed to support this budget are incorporated into the proposed rate increase. We'll have a public hearing on that rate increase May sixteenth. And the final budget proposals will be backed, brought back to this board in June of 2023. As I did mention at the beginning, we'll be having an operations committee and a finance committee in the month of May. We're happy to provide additional detail during those times. But today was, was mostly intended to be an informational overview for the board and for the public to provide greater detail on what is incorporated in the rate proposal and how that links to the overall budget process. So with that, we're happy to take any questions and/or any public comment.
Alicia, you know, we, over the last few months, between committee meetings and board meetings, we've heard a lot about the need for addressing deferred maintenance. And it's really encouraging to see how all those discussions, the budget numbers are coming together in this plan. You have, you didn't say much about the, the personnel requirements for implementing what seems like such ambitious work. Are there any concerns about being able to do so much simultaneously?
Maybe I can address it. So we are currently in recruitment for two engineering vacancies. So we are going to get fully staffed where we've been, you know, holding on some of those because of the drought and the reductions in revenue. So as we become fully staffed, we are keeping close tabs on who's assigned which projects moving forward. And we will, if needed, be coming back to the board, you know, if we feel like they're, they can't keep up with the proposed plan and we would be coming back to the board to have those discussions. But as of today, we're, you know, all the projects are, are being managed in-house. We do have design that's contracted out on Pine Mountain Tunnel Final Design. And some of these larger capital projects, we do hope to utilize consultants.
Are there board comments, questions?
Well, just on the last presentation, that is, I think worthy of note that this is an historic investment that this agency is making in our infrastructure that I don't know we have seen in a very, very long time, probably decades. And so the tasks that you guys are taking on are significant. And I think our community should be proud that we're making these bold steps to help ensure that we have a safe water supply and infrastructure to meet everybody's needs. So I'm, I'm right there with you. We'll do everything we can to support what you're doing. And per your comment, Ranji, I think it's also worthy of note that we're not increasing the number of FTEs in this organization. In fact, given the fact that we have several dozen open positions, we have been relying on overtime use of workers more than we historically would have. We have been relying on being scrappy in other ways. I think we're going to see some efficiencies come out of this new process. And I hope that the public is aware and understanding that, that we are frugal and looking at every penny here. This is, this is not a wasteful organization. We're, we're tight and we're looking at every line item in the budget. And I also think it's important just to remind the public that we have the most generous opportunity for lower-income folks to receive benefits by submitting an application to have their rates reduced, given their income. And I've now talked with many folks, specifically seniors, who were not aware of it or maybe embarrassed to take advantage of it. And I think they should, and I hope they do. And I hope we reach out and make sure that our programs, which are some of the most generous in the area, are exceedingly available and, and out there. So thank you for the terrific presentation.
You know, I, I just, I, this, this whole process of addressing the, the financial needs of the district remind me a lot of, of a story. When I, we moved here fifteen years ago and bought a house and one of my good friends came to visit and he said, it's great, you bought a really nice house and now you're going to turn it into a fixer-upper. And I'm just, you know, I think it's so important that we don't end up in that position, obviously, with our water district. And so all of this effort to ensure that we stay on top of the infrastructure and maintenance requirements is, is really encouraging. I hope all the public sees it that way as well. Monty, Larry, any, any comments or questions?
I'll just echo, you know, the, the comments that both Ranji and Jed that you both have made about, about addressing the, our, our district's needs to address the fact we have a hundred-year-old plus system with a lot of maintenance needs. It's been a focus of, of the board over the last year and particularly in the last couple of, of months as we've really made that a, a, a priority item for how we are going to move forward differently in a way that is, that will increase the reliability of our system to deliver water when we have outages, when we have pipes break, they're more costly than if we can repair them in advance. These are fiscally wise things for us to be doing. So I really appreciate the work that is being done to address all of our needs and particularly are the maintenance of our system. So, thank you.
Any public comments? Any public comments?
Yes, we have a few. Uh, the first one is Mr. Phil Sauter, then Ed Jamison and Larry Minnikes.
Okay, well, uh, thank you very much. It was a lot of information, but even for a layperson who was put together so well, it's really easy to follow. Appreciate it. Um, three comments. Uh, first is uh some extra help for the watershed, the district's most valuable asset and the source of most revenue. Uh, 10 years ago, I asked the watershed manager at the time what he thought the watershed budget should be if we wanted to address the broom problem. He said uh $6 million or double what it was at the time. Uh, 10 years later, we're at only $7 million and the broom is continuing to grow uh wicking water away from the ground in the hot summer months. I think we need to invest more in rolling back the invoices. Uh, second would be a higher investment in conservation. And for starters, I'll suggest investing in a purple pipes uh program for clusters of super users. We know where they are. We um have typically years of benign neglect until we run into a drought year and then we shut them off. We lose revenue and they lose their landscapes. With a purple pipe system, we could save some of those landscapes and we could earn revenue even when potable water revenues decline. We can charge for the pipes and we can charge for the recycled water. We know that 40% of our residential water is used outdoors, so we know we have a market. As a bonus, it would extend our supply of potable water. I think we need to understand, invest in and rapidly grow this market. This is a form of conservation that does not reduce revenues. Um, and it's predictable and reliable whether or not to bend. Uh, I'll suggest an increase from 700 acre feet to 2,000 acre feet by 2027. And then third would be investing in educating our users. I'm glad to see a starting investment in AMI. I think we need to get quickly to 100%. We know Marin Water Users respond to calls for conservation. No, we haven't always given them the tools necessary to understand their individual water use nor to detect leaks. And we know that universal usage of these devices can reduce water use by 10%. I think we need to act on this knowledge and we need to make it universal. With an upcoming rate increase, this would be an ideal time to let all customers know that we're giving them something valuable in return and something that will help them save money and save water. I'd suggest we start with super users now and look to be universal by 2025. And in 30 seconds remaining, I I know I've I belabored the conservation issue for over the last year. And I was so glad when Director Sansom mentioned before the today's meeting that his family of four is using what 57 gallons a day. And to me, that really helps to offset those 400 gallons a day users. So it's an inspiration to know that there's so many people that are responding to the conservation message. And thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Ed Jamison, please, then Mr. Larry Minnikes.
Yes, thanks. Uh, this was another truly outstanding presentation by district staff on the CIP backlog for tank and pump station rehabs and for pipe replacements. Projected reduction to our backlog looks to continue to be woefully underfunded. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Larry Minnikes, please.
Yeah, yes. Good evening. And again, I also want to thank staff. Uh, this is as comprehensive a presentation as I can ever recall us receiving in all the years that I've been coming to meetings and very much appreciate all the detail. Um, the 7200 and $123,000 match for demand reduction is a great thing. But still, conservation is being underfunded. And we need to look at putting more money into demand reduction. Uh, it's it's worthy. Um, it's a tremendous investment and uh it it's time that we really push our community to understand that conservation is something we've got to do all the time. Um, the, there's a lot of concern over the watershed budget here. Um, as uh Director Smith called out, uh, the 8% budget increase also mo- immediately caught my attention. 8% is not even keeping up with recent inflationary pressures, so we're losing ground and there's a pun in that. Um, the CIP budget for years 24 to 25 is increasing by 43%, yet the baseline CIP budget for the watershed from 224 is 3505 going to 2799. It's going down by 20% in those years. We need to pay attention to this. The next thing is the Biffip is being increased by a mere 5% from 500 to 525, yet uh slide 2072 shows it at the going from 500 to 525, yet slide 93 showed staying flat at five at 500. Um, the fire fuels baseline management funding is for year 24 is 1.17. In year 25, it's going to 1.2. That's merely 4%. A 4% increase in fire fuels management. These are the things that need to be paid attention to. Um, with a 22% increase in rates, we can't expect that everything across the line is going to go up 22%. That that would be unrealistic. But certainly, um, w- we need to to really fund these programs. Uh, with that, uh, thank you and good evening.
Thank you. I have no further speakers.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Uh, with that, I believe we can adjourn the meeting at 9:05 PM.
Thank you.